Good morning and welcome to today's Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. I am pleased today to provide that Reverend William Johnson of Roswell Street Baptist Church will be providing our invocation, followed by the pledge, which will be provided by Officer Selvi of Cobb County Police. Reverend William, if you can join us, please. Those of you who are willing and able, please stand.
It's a blessing to be here with you all this morning. Looks like you got a full house and a great day of activity planned, I'm sure. Let us look through our... Father God, what a blessing it is to be in a country and be in a city where we can still communicate and talk to you, Father. And so, Lord God, we thank you for the open doors that are here at this place and in this city, that we can ask you to come and join in the meetings and discussions that we have on behalf of our citizens and community and our families, Father. And so, Lord, we ask you not to just continue to keep these doors open, Lord God, but keep our hearts open, that you would come in and continue to work in our hearts, Lord, and draw us closer to you, Father. Lord, we are so grateful for this great mass of people. Father God, I pray your blessings over them and the families they represent, and I pray your blessings over all the discussion that will happen this day. Thank you so much for loving us, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Johnson and Officer Selvi. Our meeting is now officially called to order. We will begin with our zoning manager, who will walk through today's agenda.
Thank you. We're all back together.
Yes, we're all back together. I keep looking for you out there, and you're here.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board, and the folks in attendance today. The hearing will be conducted both virtually and in person today. This will be our last virtual hearing as we go back to our normal in-person hearing starting next month. Today's hearing will allow the virtual participation. I'm going to take a moment to explain that meeting format. As each case is called, we're going to recognize those onsite and virtually, both in support or opposed to a case. For virtual attendees, to support or oppose a case, you want to follow the following procedures. To support a zoning case, you want to type into your Q and A box, case number, like, for instance, Z1, then the letters SUP to support, and then the word speak. So to support a case, you would want to type in Z1 SUP speak. Conversely, if you want to oppose a case, the process is very similar. You would want to type in the case number, Z1, the letters OPP to oppose, and then the word speak. So for instance, you would want to type into your Q and A box, Z1 OPP speak. For the speakers participating virtually today, you will be called by name when the case is active. Your line will be unmuted, and you will say your name, where you live, and you will affirm that you've been sworn in, and then your mic will be unmuted. Today's hearing will be conducted following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. We ask that when the case is called, the applicant will stand and raise their hand and show that they are in attendance. Then we're going to call to see if there's anyone here opposed to a case. We're going to ask the opposition to also stand and raise their hand, so they can be counted for the record. After that, the applicant and any opposition will be asked to come forward, to be sworn in, so they can present testimony to the board. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's very important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes in total to state their case concerns. There's not a process to reserve your time, and there's not a rebuttal process. So each side needs to convey all the information to the board within their 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person here who wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information two or three times. Then after both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the board will start to discuss the case in hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for questions or comments. And after that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the case at hand. There are a few cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn and would not be heard today. First case is resoning case Z13 of 2021, Curly Family Homes LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and would not be heard today. Second case is SLEP 4 of 2021, North Georgia Timber LLC. This special land use permit has been withdrawn without prejudice and would not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, there is one case on today's agenda in which the applicant is asking for this case to be withdrawn without prejudice. That's Other Business Item Number 21, OHC Wiggly LLC. The applicant is present, and the applicant does wish to withdraw this case without prejudice.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Parks Office Sam Zlachin and Huff, and I represent the applicant. We ask that this case be withdrawn without prejudice and do anticipate us refiling it. Modification to a condition needs to be made, but we have to work out an agreement with an adjacent property owner, and so we just need some time to do that. But I do want to state publicly that we anticipate refiling this, but because of the delay, we'd rather withdraw it than refile it.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow?
Is there a timeframe that they would have to wait to bring it back?
No.
No, without prejudice? Okay. I make a motion that OB 21 be withdrawn from today's agenda.
I'll second.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice. I'll second it. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Huff, were the adjacent neighbors notified that you were going to be withdrawing, or are they here today in opposition?
They know that it was either going to be continued or withdrawn.
Let's get on the mic.
They know it was either going to be continued or withdrawn.
So that was communicated prior to today?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can we?
Yes, is there anyone here in opposition to this matter? It's Other Business Item Number 21, OHC Wiggly LLC. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone in opposition.
Thank you.
So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion?
OB 21.
All right, well, we'll call the question. Yes, I know. We're transitioning. Forgive us, we're transitioning from being virtual to all being present. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have either been held or continued and will not be heard today. First case is resoning case Z72 of 2020, North Point Ministries Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z72 of 2020 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z22 of 2021, Orphe, Noarall. This case was continued by staff until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z22 of 2021 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z23 of 2021, 5912 Maplewood Parkway LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z23 of 2021 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z25 of 2021, The Furniture and Mattress Warehouse LP. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z25 of 2021 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z27 of 2021, KCG Development LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z27 of 2021 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z28 of 2021, Preswick Development Company LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z28 of 2021 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z30 of 2021, Bonner Venture Investments LLC and David F. Cooper. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z30 of 2021 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z31 of 2021, Pulte Home Company. This case was continued by the staff until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z31 of 2021 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z32 of 2021, Taylor Morrison of Georgia LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z32 of 2021 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z33 of 2021, Mpingo Properties LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z33 of 2021 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z36 of 2021, TBR Cobb Parkway LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z36 of 2021 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z37 of 2021, North Georgia Timber LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z37 of 2021 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z38 of 2021, Winsong Properties. This case was continued by the staff until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z38 of 2021 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z39 of 2021, Chuck Awuzo. This case was continued by the staff until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z39 of 2021 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z40 of 2021, Brazos Hicks LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z40 of 2021 will not be heard today. SLEP 3 of 2021, Ray Murphy. This case was continued by the staff until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so SLEP 3 of 2021 will not be heard today. SLEP 5 of 2021, Stein Investment Group. This case was continued by the staff until the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so SLEP 5 of 2021 will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number 28 of 2021, Stein Investment Group. This case was continued by the staff until the July 20, 2021 Board Commissioners Hearing, so Other Business Item Number 28 of 2021 will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number 29 of 2021, 3D Construction Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the July 20, 2021 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Other Business Item Number 29 of 2021 will not be heard today. And Other Business Item Number 30 of 2021, The Church of the Pentecost USA Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the July 20, 2021 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Other Business Item Number 30 of 2021 will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, I was approached this morning for the applicant for resoning case Z26, Orchard Development LLC, and the applicant would like to continue this case until your July 20 Board of Commissioners hearing, so they can continue to work on the concept of the resoning, Madam Chair and Board.
Okay, Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, you can make a motion to continue this to the next zoning hearing.
Motion to continue this to the next zoning hearing. Thank you.
Second. Is there any further discussion? All right, we'll call the questions. The motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we start the consent agenda, do you have?
Excuse me, John, I believe we have a Commissioner Burrow would like to address you.
The Other Business 32, Walmart, is that being continued, or?
It's to be heard today.
Pardon?
It's to be heard today.
Okay, there was a question about the signs not being posted?
I've not heard anything about the signs not being posted.
We got an email yesterday.
Okay.
So is a representative from Walmart here?
Is the applicant here for Other Business Item 32?
Okay, well, we'll just hear it when it gets to there.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, have any other comments or questions? Okay, John?
Thank you. Before we start the hearing, I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off on your cell phones, as the ringing does interfere broadcast presentations. And any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If within two years of a filing of a resoning application on today's agenda, a campaign contribution totaling $250 or more is made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information concerning this requirement is located on the table in the back of this room. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And at this point, Madam Chair and Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for June 15, 2021. First case on consent is resoning case Z8, Beazer Homes LLC. The applicant requests rezoning from R30, NRC, PSC, and GC to R15 OSC for a single-family residential subdivision in landlots 66, 83, and 84 of the 19th District. The property is located on the south side of Dallas Highway, on the east side of McConnell Road, and on the west side of Lost Mountain Road. Staff recommends deletion of the request to the R20 OSC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, letter from Mr. Kevin Moore dated June 9, 2021. Number two, District Commissioner to approve the final grading and clearing plan. Number three, District Commissioner to approve the final elevations. Number four, Fire Department comments and recommendations. Number five, site plan review comments and recommendations. Number six, stormwater management comments and recommendations. Number seven, water and sewer comments and recommendations. Number eight, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resoning case Z8? Let the record show that no one opposed.
We also have the clerk's note that the title block in the site plan reflects R15 OSC, and it should reflect R20 OSC.
Yes.
On the site plan, and you also did not read the date of the site plan to be approved. You had the letter, and I know the site plan is included in the stip letter, but we were going to document that because there were several site plans as well.
Okay.
I can look it up.
We can either look it up real quick, or just say the site plan attached to Kevin Moore's letter dated June 9, 2021.
I believe there was only one, because there was a couple of site plan letters going around.
Okay.
Give me a second.
Yes, Kevin, if you can approach, please.
It's the site plan dated May 7, 2021.
Yeah.
Attached to the letter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And does the clerk have that date? Okay, we got it.
And then also that the existing home on the property shall be demolished within 90 days of the Board of Commissioner approval.
Okay.
That was also supposed to be included.
All right, got it.
Thank you.
All right, next case on consent is resoning case Z29, LaChandra Hendry. Request rezoning from R20 to LRC for a tutorial center in landlot 205 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Olive Springs Road, north of Patmail Road. The Planning Commission recommends deletion of Z29 to the limited professional services permit approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, variance is provided since the center is not located on an arterial road. Number two, high school tutoring and/or high school student use only from 12:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m., with two adults serving as administrators. The administrators cannot be high school students. Number three, number of students in the room is limited to 40 or a number lower than 40 if determined by the fire marshal. Number four, adult tutoring will be allowed from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Number five, for this applicant only and for her use only. Is the applicant present? The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resoning case Z29? Let the record show that no one opposed. Resoning case Z34, My Property Group LLC, request rezoning from GC to LI for a contracting office, parking, and storage in landlots 867 and 910 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north side of Flint Hill Road, on the south side of Powder Springs Road, east of the intersection of Flint Hill Road and Powder Springs Road. The Planning Commission recommends deletion of Z34 to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, special exception use for the applicant. Number two, pavement to be added up to the existing building from Flint Hill Road. Number three, the under-stirred buffer north of the power line easement as it abuts to Powder Springs Road remains in place. Number four, the area that is going to be parked is to have a fence or screen placed around it. And number five, staff comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resoning case Z34? Let the record show that no one opposed. Resoning case Z35, Bartlett Heating and Cooling Incorporated, request rezoning from GC to LI for HVAC contractor and office in landlot 285 of the 17th District. The property is located on the southeast side of South Cobb Drive, southwest of the intersection of South Cobb Drive and Pearl Street. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z35 to the LI zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on April 1, 2021, with the District Commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated May 26, 2021. Number three, install a 25-foot landscape buffer along the eastern property line along the residential line to the east. Number four, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. And number five, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to resoning case Z35? Let the record show that no one opposed. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. LEP 15, Marilyn Bragg, request a temporary land use permit for a personal care home in landlots 688, 689, and 719 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Avondale Parkway, on the north side of Macedonia Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LEP 15 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, maximum of 12 residents. Is the applicant present? The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 15? Let the record show that no one opposed. LEP 16, West Cobb Office Investors LLC, request a temporary land use permit for a dance studio in landlot 241 of the 20th District. The property is located on the west side of Kennesaw-Dewest Road, south of the convergence of Kennesaw-Dewest Road and Stylesboro Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LEP 16 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, if the dance studio use is discontinued, then the land use permit ceases. Number two, Fire Department comments and recommendations. Number three, site plan review comments and recommendations. And number four, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present for LEP 16? Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 16? Let the record show that no one opposed. Next one is LEP 17, Sandy Claude, request a temporary land use permit for a narrow studio in storage of art prints in landlot 336 of the 20th District. The property is located on the west side of Trail Road, north of the intersection of Trail Road and Midway Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LEP 17 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, no signs. Number two, no on-street parking. Number three, no outdoor storage. And number four, two seasonal employees only. Is the applicant present for LEP 17? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 17? Let the record show that no one opposed. And moving into the Other Business Items on the consent agenda. First one is Other Business Item Number 27 of 2021, which is to consider a site plan and stipulation amendment for Siraj Lalani regarding rezoning application Z57 of 2014. The property is located on the southwest corner of South Cobb Drive and Cranfield Road, and on the east side of Oak Street in landlot 279 of the 17th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, District Commissioner to approve the final site plan, including building size, material construction, location, buffering, and lighting. Number two, stormwater management comments and recommendations contained in the Other Business packet. Number three, Fire Department comments and recommendations contained in the Other Business packet. Number four, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations contained in the Other Business packet. And number five, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 27? Let the record show that no one opposed.
Excuse me, John. Commissioner Burrow would like to comment on that.
Yes, John, I just want to make sure that the stormwater... that the stormwater comments regarding the hydraulic study be included.
Yeah, and they are included.
Thank you.
Next item is Other Business Item Number 31 of 2021, which is to consider a site plan and stipulation amendment for Walton Communities LLC regarding rezoning application Z27 of 2018. The property is located easterly of the Interstate 575, westerly of Chastain Meadows Parkway, and northerly of Roberts Trail, in landlot 581 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to Exhibit B contained in the Other Business packet, subject to stormwater management comments contained in the Other Business packet, and all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 31? Let the record show that no one opposed. And that completes the consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board.
Thank you, John. Yes, Commissioner Sheffield, please.
John, if we can go back and amend item number four in Z34, I'm assuming where it says park, that's parking?
Correct.
If we can amend that to read the designated, the area that is going to be the designated parking area for vehicles and/or equipment, to have a fence or screen that will create a visual barrier.
Okay, got it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Okay, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All right, we'll call the question. The motion passes five zero. Thank you. Those who are here for the consent agenda are free to leave at this time.
Okay, moving into the continued held case agenda. First case is resoning case Z61 of 2020, Greenland Partners LLC, request a rezoning from RE5 to RE5, excuse me, from R20 and RE5 to R20 and RE5 for... excuse me, let me restart that. I got that all backwards.
Sorry.
Greenland Partners LLC, request rezoning from R20 to R20 and RE5 for a single-family residential subdivision detached in landlots 182, 183, 277 of the 18th District. The property is located on the northwest side of Queen Mile Road, on the eastern end of Mountain Court, south of Mountain Trail, and on the north side of Ivy Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z61? Please raise your hands. Okay, we have nine here opposed. All those folks wishing to address the board in opposition, please come forward to be sworn in.
Do you want to stand up here, please? The applicant will present first for his ten minutes.
Hi, James.
Good morning, Madam Chair. James Bailey. For the record, I'm here on behalf of Greenland Partners, and I'll just say everybody here in red is here to support my zoning today, and I'm just kidding. The project you have in front of you today is to go from R. twenty to R. A. five and R. twenty, and you can see the site depicted on the overhead there. This is the current condition of the site off of Queen Mill Road. And I want to talk about an original site plan that was filed. Originally, we came in with a seventy-nine townhomes, thirty-four single-family homes, and a five-point-three unit per acre density. Now, that density was consistent with surrounding categories and was not simply overasked to come in and submit something that wasn't consistent. And here's what I mean, and this is significant. We are immediately adjacent to R. M. twelve. Directly across the road is R. A. five. A few hundred feet away is R. M. eight, free standing townhomes at eight units per acre, additional R. M. twelve, and in fact, light industrial. So the initial plan was in fact consistent with what is in the immediate vicinity of the zoning categories. Now, we began this process, like I said, at the original site plan and worked through several issues. We listened to real community concerns from neighbors. We held a virtual meeting. We produced renderings, and we ended up at a newly designed sixty-seven four-cell single-family homes with a three-point-one-five unit per acre, which was obviously a significant downward reduction. Now, I want to talk to you because this is real facts, not things that we think. Z sixty-one, the most comparable subdivision to it is the one that's immediately adjacent to it, and both of them have entries almost side by side off of Queen Mill Road. Again, it's zoned R. M. twelve. It allows detached tons at nine-hundred-and-fifty square foot minimum in R. M. twelve. The Vining's Vintage has over a hundred-and-twenty variances, that variances on almost every single lot. It reduced the minimum lot width from seventy-five to fifty. You may hear some about that on ours. Ours is better than that with seven thousand minimum square foot lots. And the minimum square footage right next door in the R. M. twelve is fifteen hundred square feet. I'm not making that up. That's shown on the plat, the Vining's Vintage, along with the variances and the fact that it's an R. M. twelve zoning. We've also heard some concerns that construction of these homes would lower the fair market value of Vining's Vintage and surrounding areas. That's just not true. Those sales that you see there are sales done in two thousand and twenty, and you can see the ranges from two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand to three-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand. The two adjacent neighbors on Queen's Mill haven't sold their homes, but the tax value you can see there is right at three-hundred thousand dollars. And as set forth in the stipulation letter, our homes will be three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and up and will in fact be similar to or increase home value. You've also heard at the Planning Commission and others that there was an opposition petition to this zoning. That's not correct. There was an initial opposition town to the hundred-and-thirteen unit proposed development with five-point-three units per acre in townhomes. The current plan again has sixty-seven single-family homes, which is a reduction of forty-six homes. So we've gone from a hundred-and-ninety-three to ten. Nine are here today, I assume, and that's after reduction to the sixty-nine and now the sixty-seven. We held a Zoom community meeting for COVID and had ten attendees. And why don't we have a hundred-and-ninety-three signatures? And why don't we have people here saying that they're now happy with a sixty-seven plan that's recommended for approval by your staff? Because happy people typically don't make their voices heard. They're happy, and they go about their daily life, business, and school. You mentioned, I talked about the zoning categories, but the surrounding density is also similar. The meadows at Queen's Mill, which we'll see a picture of in a few minutes, is five-point-five-nine. Vining's Vintage right next door, R. M. twelve, is three-point-eight-seven, and the bungalows are two-point-nine-four. Again, we're at three-point-one-five. So what has changed since the two P. C. hearings that we've held in this application? There's no exterior lots that need variances. We were seeking a height variance, but because of the topography that was mentioned, we've removed that. It will comply with code. We removed setback variances, remembering Vining's Vintage has variances on every lot. We relocated parking spaces, and we submitted a new landscape plan, which is in the stipulation letter, to guarantee buffers to the adjacent neighbors, double stacked, and also an entrance design for the Queen Mill entrance. We also agreed to raise the minimum square footage to two-hundred, I mean, to two thousand square feet and up, remembering that next door is fifteen hundred. Detailed landscape plan was submitted. There was some questions about what were the actual measurements, so we submitted that. It's twenty-five-foot buffers. You can see there on the lower left and the upper or middle right corner, those are against the two adjacent homes. Will have double stacked plantings that spread ten to thirty feet with a maximum height of twenty to forty feet. Those will be installed as part of the overall landscape plan. This is a exhibit that's also been stipulated to and was a request, I believe by Mick, it may have been by another neighbor, to see what the entrance landscaping would look like. So that's been submitted, and we've stipulated to that. Example, the proposed homes will be two-car garages, three-hundred thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty and up. Market is trending up. You saw those sales next door. We believe will be higher than those, and we have agreed to a mandatory stipulation that based on the elevations attached that the district commissioner would approve the final elevations before a land disturbance permit would be issued. Let's talk about the positive variances in this zoning. You may have heard me say this before. These are variances that are not required by the code but are things that the property owner is agreeing to do. Those are in fact positive variances from the basic requirements. Sixty-seven homes, two less than the sixty-nine recommended by staff, two thousand minimum square footage, architectural materials, as you've seen, three-point-eight-five acres of open space, rental restrictions of five percent, mandatory HOA, underground utilities, and defined buffers. All of those things that are not required, that we've agreed to do, and a minimum lot size equal to Vining's Vintage with minimum lot width is greater. Now, I had, I heard some concerns about, if you look on the site plan, there are about seven homes that would back up the Queen's Mill. Of course, they would be between twenty-five-foot buffer and double stacked landscaping, and there was an indication that that might formal. And so I went and looked, and as a matter of fact, our seven homes are consistent with what is out there now. As you see the pictures here, these are hundreds of feet away from our proposed development, not miles, and you can see there are numerous scores of homes that you can see the sides or the backs from Queen Mill Road. So all of that put together is why your professional staff, the people you hire, to plan and determine what is appropriate for the areas, recommended approval at sixty-nine, not the sixty-seven that we have before you. They say it will permit a use that is suitable in the area. It will not adversely affect the surrounding property and will be complementary to the area. It won't cause a problem with schools or streets. We've agreed to do everything D. O. T. and stormwater has asked us to do. And then it also says there are existing and changing conditions affecting the use and development of the property, which grounds, give grounds for approving. And why is that important? Because the future land use map shows this as low-density residential, but it allows that it's a guide and not a mandatory thing to follow. And at certain times, there are circumstances in which decisions are made that are contrary to the guidance provided by the future land use map. And what would support that? Well, I would respectfully state that when your professional staff recommends approval and recommends a minor deviation from that, from two-point-five to three-point-one-five, that is when it is appropriate. And also, this plan addresses the trends per the two thousand and forty comp plan, where we have younger members of the millennial generation seeking new homes that they can afford and also providing a single-family owner occupied detached homes that will be the most sought-after housing type in Cobb County. Now, why would someone still oppose that? People may have different decisions, but I want to show you some of the emails I got in opposition to this, which I believe is to be nonsense. People from poverty-stricken backgrounds are associated with crime. They tried to tell me that this three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, sixty-seven-home development would somehow mess up their culture, and the culture of lower-income people will come with it. I find that offensive and nonsensical. But let's look in conclusion at the facts that support it. The sales are envisioned to be three-fifty. The density is reduced by forty-one percent. Positive variances, staff has recommended approval, stormwater and traffic addressed. So we ask, and I'm out of time, that you follow your staff's recommendation of approval and approve this at sixty-seven homes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, those in opposition. Just of note, we have ten minutes in total, so you'll have to share your time. And just want to verify with staff that we have no one virtual in opposition.
One virtual who's not speaking.
One virtual who's not speaking. Okay, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Robin Meyer. I chair the Mabelton Improvement Coalition Zoning Committee, and I live at sixty-three-seventy-five Queen Mill Road, which is approximately a thousand feet from this property. First of all, I want, I want to say that, that we recognize fully that the future land use map is a policy guide, and it's probably one of the things that your planning commission took into consideration when it recommended denial of this application. Simply because property can be developed to a density such as you see on the site plan does not mean that it should be developed to that density. This property is not a meadow. It's a mountain, and the density and the site plan that you have in front of you is simply not appropriate here. Development along Queen Mill Road is essentially low-density. There are some, some communities with higher density, but those tend to have entrances that are minimal on Queen Mill Road, and the density is back from the street. The site plan issues remain the same throughout this nearly year-long process. The exterior lots are not seventy feet wide. The addition of the ten-foot landscape buffer is, does not mitigate that impact. The steep terrain means that the, that the buffers will not shield the view of the homes from the neighbors or from the street. The steep terrain also means that we're going to see houses virtually, literally sitting on top of houses. There's nearly a hundred feet of elevation change from the street to the back of this property. The homes with their backs to the street will be shielded by a landscape plan. It's not really a plan. It's mostly a drawing that contains only deciduous trees. So in the wintertime, we're going to see decks, tricycles, trashcans, everything that people keep in their backyards. Guest parking is poorly distributed. Sidewalks are not required in areas where they might interfere with guest parking. There's no, no real amenity package for this community, and much of the open space is unusual, unusable. It's either on the corner of a busy road, it's behind a home, or there is that one small area in the middle. The design issues are the same. These homes are simply not in keeping with what's being built in our community at this point and sold. This is the development that we're seeing in our community. And when you look at the renderings that you've just seen, you see that this is simply not up to standard. We're still missing, missing information. No elevations of the rear of the home, no real landscape drawing, just a landscape plan, just a pretty drawing, no proposed building footprints. We've asked for renderings that would allow us to understand what this looks like from Queen Mill Road. We've had none. In fact, really, we've had no communication with the applicant at all until a few minutes before this hearing began. No answers to our emails, no copies of correspondence filed with you. The nature of the variances requested in the stipulations letter are unclear. It appears to us it grants permission to grant variances to the zoning division manager, which is certainly something we've never seen before. In summary, it doesn't, it does not comply with the future land use map, with the prevalent zoning in the area. The homes will be an unattractive addition to our streetscape, and immediate neighbors are going to be seriously impacted. So we ask that you deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Remaining time for opposition is six and a half minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Brenda Nash, and I live at sixty-three-hundred Queen Mill Road. This is the picture of the property, not the dump you just saw. That's hillside in the picture there is the hillside in question. The home to the right is my home. There is an elevation change of approximately a hundred feet here, and when you stack this hillside with sixty-seven homes, all in close proximity to each other, seven of which are running along my property line, all in, but the rears of these homes facing my home, I get the backyards with the bikes, the trashcans, the pools, the dogs, and any other item that they don't want to be seen. And this is what I, my view will be from now on. This is, if this is approved, this is a linear home development with houses built just like we're talking about, and this is the view that the neighbors have. So it's not the pretty homes that you saw in the picture a minute ago. Rather than do the right thing and reduce the density, they want to try and disguise the back of these homes by using ineffective landscape buffer. The homes and the trees will completely block the limited view that I already have. When I try to exit my driveway from the left, I have a blind hill, and from the right, I have a very sharp curve, and that one little patch that I can see through there now will be trees and homes, so I will not be able to see a guy in my driveway at all. Another major concern is the stream that I have that runs along the back of my property that collects water from this mountainside. That's not it. Oops. I guess the string didn't get in there. I'm sorry. Okay. This, this development with a high density, this high density would require massive clearcutting. We already have deep ravines that run throughout the back of our property, even with a heavy forest floor. During the construction period, we will suffer horrific erosion of the land and flooding of our stream, and due to the close proximity of the Nicah Jack Creek and the Chattahoochee River, they too will have possible contamination from this development. I have spoken to the majority of the neighbors. I have since the nine months this has been going on. I've stayed in constant contact with them, and yes, the petition did start with the townhomes on it, but you will note at the back of the petition that they want, they, we stated at the end of the petition that we wanted to keep this zoned, R. twenty as it is currently zoned, because they are, have been kept involved with the sixty-seven homes. They have seen the floor plans, and they still think it's way too congested for this area. So we ask that you please deny this request and keep it, R. twenty is currently zoned.
Thank you. Remaining speakers have about a minute and fifteen seconds each. Less than four minutes remaining.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Faye Williams. I'm at sixty-four-one Ivy Road, and to tell me the value of my property with a major, a master storm drain next to it down my driveway, that's not going to work. I know values. People, I'm a real estate agent, and I know when people see storm drains next to houses that they look at, they go the other way. And this is a master storm drain that's going to go down the side of my driveway, and I'm just really upset about that. With storm drains, there's a lot of things that happen. I mean, the lack of maintenance, people just don't maintain them. If you look, if I kind of did a study, and I went around, I looked at subdivisions that had been existing for a couple of years, and they're just, they're not policed. With storm drains, you have the rodent situation. I was there when Vine, Vine and Vintage was on the back of my house when that was built, and we got rodents in our basement. When they start breaking ground, we got water issues. We had water issues when we first bought the house. It took a couple of years to get that under control. We got that under control after a lot of money, time, and trying to figure out where the best way to deal with it. So I don't want the water issues to start again once they break ground. I just look at that, it's, that's going to be a repeat process. I just don't want to deal with that all over again. Another thing I wanted to mention is that the, the traffic. People just throw, with the, with high density, you have, you have an influx of trash. They just throw trash Popeyes, McDonald's, just when you wake up in the morning, you got all this in your driveway from the night before. So that's definitely a concern, the speeding and things of that nature. I'm at sixty-four-one Ivy Road. I oppose this, and I just want you guys to hear my say.
Thank you. Less than two minutes further remaining.
Good morning. My name is Yoshiko Marshall, and I reside at sixty-two-fifty Queen Mill Road. It is our position that granting the request to rezon the property from R. twenty to R. A. five is tantamount to spot zoning. Spot zoning is a zoning designation of one parcel of land to allow zoning use that is incompatible with the zoning of most of the nearby lands in order to accommodate a preferred use by someone with a putative interest in the parcel. We believe that the applicant has consistently shown a site plan where their interest in rezoning is to overpopulate these lots for the greatest profit and not for the general welfare of the area. If you look at the G I. S. map, every parcel of land adjacent to the given property, property, and by adjacent, I mean that's touching the property that's in question, is zoned either I twenty or R. fifteen, R. twenty or R. fifteen, with a minor R15, with a minor exception. There's a sliver of land zone that R12 that he had indicated, but that sliver of land only encompasses about 5% of the length of the perimeter of one side of the property, and this small tract of land has no homes on it, it only has amenities that are heavily buffered from the surrounding lots. Spot zoning is forbidden under Georgia law as it amounts to an arbitrary or capricious decision to rezone rather than fully consider the application of relevant zoning laws that are supported by the evidence presented. Carving out this parcel of land to accommodate the applicant's request based on the proposed site plan will result in a decision to reclassify property without evidence of the need to do so that supports the future land use map or the surrounding community. Spot zoning, simply put, is zoning in absence of good planning, and that is exactly what the applicant has presented, a site plan absent of good planning. Given all of this and everything that was mentioned before, we ask the board to side with the community for which it serves and to deny the applicant's request.
Thank you. There are no remaining speakers, so we'll turn. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, there's one second. Hold on, ma'am. I'll confer with the applicant to see if he would like additional time, and we can give the speaker. Yes, ma'am, you can go ahead. And I'm sorry, ma'am, go ahead. We'll give the applicant the balance. You sure? Okay. And I'm sorry, I couldn't tell with the badge if you were, with the lanyard if you were Cobb County. So with that, we have concluded opposition. Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I can have the applicant to step up to the mic. I just have a couple of questions on the zoning, the stipulation letter, and actually one is going to be for you, John. Do you have a letter? Okay. June 9th. Just a quick question regarding special stip, well, stip number seven in a mail kiosk. Is that just boiler template, or are there mailboxes at each unit, or is it just a community mailbox?
I think that mail kiosk was in there at the time that the townhomes were in there, and that may have been what, it's out. But sometimes when there's a central amenity area, they go with an option of putting the mail there, and that's certainly nothing that we're wedded to.
All right, thanks. That was, anybody else have a question for James while he's up here? No? Okay. John, is item number 18? Okay. Okay, for item number 18, if you can just explain to us if that means that automatic variances will be granted.
John, can you help and read what that is?
What item, what item 18 is, in a nutshell, is it grants the zoning division manager the authority to grant variances for things that may not be known. And, you know, looking at the site plan, to the best of my knowledge, there are no variances on the site plan. It's to the code. So if this was considered for approval, I would ask the board to strike the part about the zoning division manager, because we normally don't do that.
Right. Okay, that's what I wanted to confirm. Thank you. Thank you all for joining us today. Thank you to the applicant and for those that are in opposition, whether you're present or virtual. While I can appreciate the applicant's desire to develop at the site, there are several concerns that I have with the revised site plan, the stipulation letter, and stormwater management comments. With respect to the revised site plan, it does not foster a sense of community. Open space is primarily located on the perimeter of the development, and the open space that is located at the front of the community should be more centralized for greater access to all that resides in the community. The plan does not have any amenities to offer its residents. Based on the elevation, the homes, whether facing the front or the rear of Queen Mill, will appear extremely high from the road. And while the point was made earlier that there are homes that face Queen Mill Road, none of those homes pose a stormwater issue to the neighbors. The buffers will not significantly shield the homes from view along Queen Mill Road. And based on the stormwater comments, there is a potential or known drainage problems that exist for development downstream from this subject site. A 70-foot-wide lot is required along the exterior of the development. The plan does not reflect this requirement, which I think there may have been a revision to that this morning. The summary for intent for the rezoning indicates a positive variance, but I did not find one, although the applicant shared this morning that some of the positive variances would include forming an HOA, not having or capping the rental rate at 10% of the community, but those are very standard practices and stipulations that we see. So it's very hard pressed to find a true positive variance for the application. With respect to the stipulation letter, the reduction of two homes from 69 to 67, it eliminated the need for some variances, but there are variants that are still required to create additional space between the interior units of 61 and 67. And unfortunately, that variance will be a self-imposed hardship and one that supports that the development might be ill-suited for that location. While the developer agreed to increase the square footage to 2,000, and as late as yesterday, there was conversation that it will be increased to 2,200, it is still considerably smaller than the most recent 2019 development, which is located right across the street, and it's also considerably smaller than the homes that are located in Viney's Vintage. With respect to the special stipulation letter, item number 10 speaks to a non-continuous sidewalk, and it reads that sidewalks will not be included in areas where there is a conflict with guest parking. So as I visualize this, I'll have a sidewalk that will dead-end at a location where parking is required, and then the sidewalk will pick up on the other side of the parking lot. And that, again, for me, further supports that this development might be ill-suited for the proposed location. 17E of the stipulation letter speaks to blasting. I'm concerned that blasting will be required because of the terrain, and I'm further concerned of the potential damage that the blasting will cause the neighboring properties. As we address stormwater management, the comments from staff, the potential for stormwater drainage, which you heard from one of the speakers today, is another source of angst concerning this development. There are several stormwater comments regarding runoff. Most notable are items number eight, where staff notes that there is known drainage problems from this site, and there are multiple points of discharge of stormwater from this site. Stormwater discharges through an established residential neighborhood downstream. So this is, again, of a particular concern for me, for the neighbors that will be impacted and the potential erosion to their properties. The zoning request has presented an impasse between the applicant and the community. There have been recommendations made by the planning commissioner to submit a site plan that has less density, such as an OSC 15 or an RSL, which is residential senior living. I will draw the conclusion that options, that those options did not fit the need nor the vision of the applicant. I will further conclude that the revised plan submitted on 6/9 and a conversation with the applicant's attorney on 6/14 is what we call in real estate your highest and best offer. Unfortunately, the offer that has been presented does not fit the vision of the community. And with that, Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
I make a motion that the application for zoning case Z61 be denied.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll call the questions. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is ROD 1 of 2020, Atlantic Realty Acquisitions LLC. The applicant asks for approval of the redevelopment overlay district for mixed-use development in landlots 557, 596, and 629 of the 16th District. The property is located on the southeastern side of Sandy Plains Road and on the northerly side of East Piedmont Road. The applicant is present. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to ROD 1? Please stand up and raise your hands. And please remain standing while we get count.
Jason.
Because Jason is, and Jessica. Is that total? Or is Jace still counting? Okay. Can I get a show of people here who are in support of ROD 1 of 2020? Please stand up, raise your hand. Six, okay. Madam Chair and Board, let the record show that there are 36 people here opposed in person, and 10 people opposed virtually to ROD 1. And as for support, there are six people here in person in support of ROD 1, and 20 people online in support of ROD 1. So all those folks who want to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
John, can you please repeat how many were virtual in opposition and support?
Yes, for virtual, there's 20 in support and 10 opposed virtually.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant, Atlantic Realty, in this application for rezoning, which finally arrives here at the Board of Commissioners after a long period of time during which this application has been pending, and even prior to that, a long period of time when this applicant, Atlantic Realty, had been discussing this proposed plan and redevelopment of the Sprayberry Crossing Shopping Center with the community at large. This property is the Sprayberry Crossing Shopping Center. It's 17.6 acres, and we have a site plan up for you that's located off of Sandy Plains, really at the intersection of Sandy Plains and Piedmont Road. I'm just going to go over and briefly introduce you to the plan and the proposed product, and go over those with you, and then return to the plan and get much more specific to describe for you the challenges and limitations that are presented by this property and how those were addressed and resolved by this particular applicant. First, this plan does propose a mixed-use development of this property, which is currently zoned neighborhood shopping. It's been zoned neighborhood shopping since the '70s when it was first developed as a shopping center. You see that this property, though, is on Sandy Plains, which is across the top. East Piedmont Road is across the left of your site plan. What's being proposed are 102 townhomes, for-sale townhomes, and we've included as well with that a 10% rental limitation as part of our discussions and addressing concerns. In addition, in the middle, you'll see what's labeled as retail. That's just over a 30,000-square-foot grocery store, so that's legitimate, real retail that is being proposed for this mixed-use development site and which is currently already allowed under the existing zoning of neighborhood shopping. To the left, we have a building that would be an age-restricted senior leased units, 132, no more than three stories of age-restricted senior units that's there on the left-hand side. You'll see the townhomes that wrap from right going down to the bottom, and in the middle, you have the private cemetery, which is the Mays Family Cemetery, which we will speak to as well. I want to show the two elevations for you. First, of the proposed age-restricted senior building, what you can see from that is the very high level of appearance and attractiveness for the age-restricted units and building, including some areas around 4,000 square feet on the first floor as it would face towards the interior of the development that are reserved for retail, restaurant, bakery, those types of uses as well. And going to the townhome elevations, which is the next page, we have our proposed townhome elevations as well for the for-sale townhomes that will be throughout this development, totaling a maximum of 102. Both of these elevations are included within our stipulation letter as well, and what they can show you very clearly, without question, is the high quality of appearance that Atlantic Realty is presenting for this development. Likewise, the commercial components will be consistent with this overall architectural theme as well. Going back to the site plan itself, I'm going to go through some of the highlights of it, the challenges and limitations that were faced by Atlantic Realty. Turning to the plan itself, first, you can see with Sandy Plains here, you see these out parcels that are surrounding it. That's how things were done in the 1970s when out parcels were sold from the main shopping center tract, which is the 17.6 acres. It is a redevelopment site, and by that, we are proposing a complete redevelopment of a shopping center that has fallen into disrepair, not just recently, fallen into disrepair over a decade ago. This shopping center has been an anvil around the necks of this community for over a decade. This county, and one of the very few, if not the only case, successfully brought and applied their blight tax under your ordinance to this shopping center. This shopping center is one of a small handful, I believe it's one of six identified redevelopment sites in your comprehensive plan where the county says, "We want this site to be redeveloped." And that's what we're presenting to you today, a redevelopment of this site under ROD, the Redevelopment Overlay District Ordinance for your county. That's what this site faces in terms of how it arrives, and what Atlantic Realty has done is present a realistic opportunity of a development and a mixed-use development that accomplishes all of those goals. Turning to the Mays Family Cemetery, that's a challenge and a limitation right smack-dab in the middle of this property. It's over an acre in size. It was established over 120 years ago by Augustus Mays in the late 1890s as a family cemetery. It is still active today for that family, smack-dab in the middle. Unfortunately, it is not a respectful site for the burial of anybody's family member as it sits today. Atlantic Realty, however, has proposed and contained in our conditions it will repair, fix up, add fencing, other decorative walls to complete a respectful, beautiful site for that private cemetery, fully supported by your Cobb County Cemetery Preservation Commission, in order to turn this challenging limitation into a positive for this overall development. In addition, there's another challenge, and that was there was a private water line that ran in this area here, serving adjacent property, not part of the Sprayberry Crossing property. It's a private line, not properly metered. It happened years and years and years ago. Sprayberry Crossing, Atlantic Realty, as part of taking on that challenge... We have established six, really seven points of connectivity to East Piedmont, three places of connectivity, three places of connectivity across Sandy Plains, and one location for connectivity to Post Oak Tritt. Again, all of that connectivity is existing today. There were various easements put in place, cross-easements and so forth that were put in place a long time ago before any of us were here looking at Sprayberry Crossing that have to be respected again today. We are doing that, but allowing for that is plenty of connectivity for people to move in and out of this proposed redevelopment and to gain access to various arterial roads such as East Piedmont and Sandy Plains. Another limitation in terms of access are these out parcels. We don't own all of those. We were able to acquire one out parcel here, but we're not able to obtain any others. Of particular importance, which you will hear about, though, is this out parcel. That's a liquor store. It's an existing business, ongoing business, successful business. That business and property owner, while we have had many, many discussions with him, he wants to remain in business and remain in that location, which he has every right to do. He also, in terms of that, we have worked with him and presented a proposal, which we believe is the best option, given the limitations, for getting people in and out of this particular location, which is the Signal at Ken Jack. That's a full signal here at Ken Jack and Sandy Plains. We are providing access to our site through both the grocery parking lot here as well as interior access here. This access that currently exists will be closed off. We are preparing to add additional parking and fix up the pavement in this area for the liquor store owner, and that's what he's agreeable to and nothing else. We've accommodated that and done the best possible option that we can to address the access here so that we keep the traffic issues, any traffic issue stacking or whatnot, on our side, not on Sandy Plains, but within our own development that we can accommodate. That that we have proposed in this site plan is the best option possible. In addition, as I said, we have more than sufficient other access points to ensure throughout this development that those coming and going from this development as built as well as those using other commercial uses throughout the general Sprayberry Crossing area can get through and get access to the various lights and various roads for their use as well without further negatively impacting Sandy Plains Road. Lastly, I do want to, two things I want to point out. Number one, this plan is the result of months, of over a year of negotiations, discussions, where it has been revised countless times. Initially, this plan, and Atlantic Realty, proposed over 200 apartments in a building as part of this plan, as part of a mixed-use development like you've seen many times in other locations. Ultimately, Atlantic Realty made the decision to remove that apartment component altogether and in turn replaced it with, for simple, for-sale townhomes, numbering 102, overall decreasing the proposed number of units by over 100 for this mixed-use community, mixed-use development. As we stand here today, what we present to you is the best possible, most realistic option for redevelopment of this site. To reject it is to condemn this site and this property owner to decades more of what you have today.
Mr. Moore, your time's up.
Thank you, Bill. All right, we'll now take opposition with our applicant. Are we going to have more time? Seven seconds, so I'm talking about that right now.
And I will just remind all of the speakers that the timer is on the podium as you're watching it, so.
Thank you. The applicant ran over by seven seconds, so those who are here in opposition will have an additional seven seconds. Just be mindful of each other's time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Tony Raffa, and I'm the owner-operator of the McDonald's at the corner of Post Oak Tritt and Sandy Plains Road. My comments today are primarily DOT-related but have serious implications in regard to Sprayberry Crossing project. That being said, may I continue? Thank you. We understand that our businesses, mine, the Zach's Bees, Kids Are Kids, and others are not directly related to the Sprayberry Crossing project, but our concern is the changes DOT wants to make to the driveway off Post Oak Tritt. DOT considers the left out of the driveway a safety issue. Even if there, even though there were only eight incidences in three years at this location, we might be trading one safety issue for a number of safety issues. Consider the added volume going through completed Sprayberry Crossing. In my traffic counts that I did for a full two-week period. Could you put that up, please? In a five-day period, there were 1,010 cars made a left turn out of the driveway in just three hours that I counted cars during a day, and that's a five-day week. That's the actual count I made last week. And then consider our businesses are open, not three hours a day, but 10 to 16 hours a day, seven days a week. Thousands of additional cars in the Sprayberry project would result. Think of the added volume going through Sprayberry Crossing, the U-turns on Post Oak Tritt by those cars and trucks that are forced to make a right out of the driveway but wanted to make a left. The added congestion for the bottle shop parking, parking lot with thousands of additional cars per week, which were turned away from the driveway exit by not being able to make a left. Also, consider the adding cars on that nice new smooth road in Sprayberry Crossing as an alternative to the congestion on Sandy Plains Road. Keep the traffic flowing, keep our customers not only coming to our business, but give them a way to leave. Since the completion of the median on Sandy Plains Road last year, the driveway off Post Oak Tritt has become very important ingress egress for the businesses on the corner of Sandy Plains and Post Oak Tritt. Customers make a left off of Sandy Plains and then a right at the driveway, then upon leaving, turn a left from the driveway to rejoin Sandy Plains. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Those remaining have six minutes and 30 seconds.
Just go to five. Good morning, my name's Maureen Rittner. I live Ashbury Point, which is back Ken Jack Road, directly across from the bottle shop, and feel that this will be a detriment to our community, especially on that side with the businesses as well. I just wanted to, I know that I've sent my presentation ahead of time. I don't know how many of you have actually had the opportunity to look at it, but through the planning commission process, I have presented mainly focused on the traffic. And in this proposal, there's 35, almost 3,500 proposed additional daily traffic for Sandy Plains Road, which right now, we're already at a level of service of F. There's 41,400 daily traffic that flows through that corridor, and with an addition of 3,500, we're going to be in a comparison to Barrett Parkway. Currently, between seven and six during the day, the average speed of miles per hour is 38.3 with, and we're in a 45-speed limit corridor. Also, it falls within the Sandy Plains High School zone, so, you know, we're impacted during the peak hours at 25 miles per hour, which will back up as well. I wanted to give you an idea in the site plan, the kind of craziness that we potentially are facing in the traffic and having traffic flow through onto Sandy Plains and the encouragement of U-turns. Today, there's only three legal U-turns. One is at East Piedmont, one is at Post Oak Tritt, and one is at Ebenezer. And there's also a recommendation from DOT to change the Ebenezer light to have an overlay continuous right out of Ebenezer onto Sandy Plains, which reduces the ability to do that U-turn at that light. Also, the tractor trailers, I can't see a 52-footer going through the bottle shop parking lot in the configuration that it's in. If you'll go to the last, not the last one, the second to the last slide, we, with, you know, next one, yeah. We actually on one Sunday came through to try to look at a, the configuration and how it would really look, and this is, we staged kind of traffic flow through this parking lot, and this is what it will look like. So if you have, there's only three cars that can actually get through sitting at that front exit from the bottle shop at any given time. So respectfully, I hope that you will consider the DOT as a major challenge here. As far as a plan, we don't have a plan, and we, the community, all of the people back that have, are opposed to this, want to see something of substance. We all understand that this needs to be developed at some point, and at some point, there will be traffic, but there has to be a good, safe plan for us. I appreciate it, and hopefully you'll look to deny this. Thank you.
Thank you. Remaining three minutes.
Hello, Commissioners, Tim Carini. Just like to submit these 1,791 signatures from both the digital and written petition against these apartments, townhomes, and density. In February of this year, the BOC voted unanimously to amend the ROD code to not hear new cases. Commissioner Barrell stated that it was not needed and even suggested that no new applications as of March 1st needed to be changed to effective immediately. The fear was that there would be another application coming in before the March deadline. At the same hearing, Jessica Gwynne, Cobb County Community Development Agency Director, stated, and I quote, "This code is not addressing the issue it was intended to address," end quote, "Everybody was in agreement in February. This is a bad code." ROD throws out most of the existing code, and this application fails to meet several of the ROD requirements, thereby creating zoning at will. It fails to meet three of the 16 use limitations of the ROD code, must be 20% residential. This is not. The county has stated in email they do not know how to calculate such a requirement. At the 6/1 hearing, Commissioner Dan said a contemporaneous variance can be granted if it doesn't conform, furthering the zoning at will situation. Where ROD code also states, "High residential density should be located adjacent to or in close proximity to an interstate." This is neither. It's four miles away, which will now quantify close proximity for other zoning codes such as RRC. Next slide, please. Not going to read all of these, but the, another stipulation in the ROD code is that the entire project must be consistent with 427 of Cobb County Community Development standards. This project has not conformed to over half of those standards. In fact, one of the standards states minimize conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles, end quote, and this plan actually increases those and creates dangerous situations. For instance, there'll be no left turn out of Post Oak Tritt, and you heard Mr. Raffa say, "There's thousands of cars a day that turn left there." The county is also proposing those thousands of cars a day go through a private bottle shop parking lot, which is unacceptable. There are three entrances on East Piedmont. This one in rush hour traffic, there's bumper-to-bumper right here. There's no way you're cutting across two lanes and making a left at Sandy Plains. The majority of the traffic is going to be on this one, which is going through the Pocket Park here, and oh, by the way, there's a daycare here very close to the road that's now going to have thousands of cars, creating a dangerous situation. You've heard the applicant say that this is since August, and that is true. It was filed in August. It was to be heard in September. The applicant delayed it for seven months. Now they're trying to push it through. I would like to say with just a minute remaining, don't take my word for how dangerous this
Mr. Carini, your time's up.
That is from Chairman Beloy of the Planning Commission, and you can see it.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, your time is running.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, there was an email that you posted that has been requested to be emailed or submitted into the record if you want Commissioners to see it. At least pass that to Commissioner Bell.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry, this is inappropriate for there to be communication from the audience directly to the Board of Commissioners, those who are here to speak. Sir, I'm sorry, this is inappropriate.
Sir, sir, please.
Okay, thank you. Just bear with us, we are reviewing what has been entered into the record. Commissioner Barrell, whenever you're ready, you can address.
Before we get into the discussion here, I'd like to ask Mr. Sean Adams to come up. He had signed up to speak, but we ran out of time, and he represents the Sprayberry Bottle Shop owner and sent us an email last night that needs to be entered, and we need to hear from you for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrell.
Thank you.
Chairman and Rested Commissioners, my name is Sean Adams with Anderson Tate &amp; Carr, 1960 Satellite Boulevard in Duluth. I am here on behalf of the Sprayberry Bottle Shop, whose property, as you've seen, is at the Signal of Sandy Plains and Ken Jack Drive. We did submit a supplemental letter of objection yesterday evening based on correspondence with the county and DOT that occurred after the document submission deadline of last Wednesday. In addition, hard copies were placed at your desk and submitted to the clerk for submission into the record. In brief, my client objects to any action by the BOC that conditions access through my client's property in a manner that is inconsistent with the site plan attached as Exhibit A of the objection letter and also presented by the applicant today. Doing so would result in an inverse condemnation, thus depriving my client of his constitutional rights. We have worked with the applicant, as you've indicated here, and we are in agreement with a mutual understanding as it relates to the site plan, both that's a part of the objection letter but also presented by the applicant today. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Barrell?
Yes. We did receive this last night, and we have been in contact with you, with DOT and your client. So we understand your client has property rights and does not wish to open up the back of his parking lot to through traffic, hence the plan that was submitted Friday, which shows access to the Signal in kind of a serpentine way. So that plan you and the developer's attorney are in agreement with for this site?
The plans have ended today, yes, is the one that we are in agreement with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Barrell?
Okay, there's going to be a lot of discussion and clarification on this case. Before I get into all of that, I'd like to call up Drew Wrestler and Amy Diaz from DOT. Since traffic is probably the biggest concern right now with the site plan, Amy and Drew, the plan that was submitted is direct. the plan that was submitted is direct access or access to the signal at Ken Jack, which is the only full access and signal on Sandy Plains between Piedmont and Post Oak Tritt. So in discussions with Mr. Rafa from McDonald's, Mr. Mullis from Zaxby's, and George and Marty from Kids Are Kids, we have proposed or recommended a more direct access through the bottle shop parking lot to line up with Ken Jack. But as you heard from their attorney, that's not acceptable. And actually, we can't force that recommendation. But that impacts the no-left turn lane out onto Post Oak Tritt for the three customers, businesses that I just mentioned, for their customers. So when this, there currently is a left turnout at Post Oak Tritt. And that way, at the signal, they are able to go left to turn south on Sandy Plains, which is the access they would need if they want to go south, as opposed to Ken Jack at the signal, or going all the way out to Piedmont and going south at that signal. So when this was developed, we didn't have the distance requirement from the Post Oak Tritt Sandy Plains signal in our DOT requirements, the 250 feet. And that's why it's currently allowed at this point, correct? Amy, Drew?
That would be, that would explain why it is what it is today, I believe. Yes.
Okay. But now we have a requirement that it be 250 feet from the signal at the intersection. And right now, there's nothing coming out of Sprayberry Crossing, because you know it's been in disrepair and mostly vacant for 25 years. But if it gets developed and you add more homes and shopping and additional buildings and such, it's going to create more traffic. And you've also got the two left turn lanes on Post Oak Tritt to the, at the signal, to go left on Sandy Plains. And that, that left coming out of their driveways would be a conflicting movement with those two left turn lanes. And that is a very dangerous situation. And the distance from the signal is why we're having to restrict that left turnout if this is developed. So we're kind of at an impasse here with, with the restricted left turn lane. I mean, I can't allow that with it being a safety issue and not meeting, meeting the requirements. And I'd like to have, be able to, for them to come around and go straight through to Ken Jack, but that's not an option either now. So do you have anything to add? I know we've looked at several other options, but to put an offset signal at the driveway between the parking lot for the grocery and the bottle shop would create more traffic and stacking on Sandy Plains. And you've heard, it's already at a level F. And anything that goes here is going to increase traffic, because it's vacant now. That's a given. But I can't, I can't allow the left turnout with the conflicting movements, and it doesn't meet the distance requirement. It's a safety issue. And Amy, can you state how many, the report you sent me had 14 crashes at that location over the last three years?
Yeah, so it had 14 crashes, but they looked in specifically at that one driveway. It's 12.
12.
Eight of them were turning left and four of them turning right.
Okay. So without anything developed there, there's, there's already crashes, but it'll be a lot more intense with added traffic. But it will be internal and not pushed out onto Sandy Plains. So, I mean, I can't, I'm kind of stuck. I can't do either. I mean, I can't, I can't go there. So anything else on the, the opposition that you heard from that you'd like to speak to or clarify?
Sure, I'd be glad to. And just for context, for those, those here, when a development comes in of this size, the developer will submit a traffic study that includes information about the expected additional traffic coming from the development and the impact on the transportation network. And so our responsibility is to review that information, identify and concur with any impacts, and then identify any, any possible mitigation techniques that could be done through the, through the development. So when we look at this development in particular, there are seven primary access points. If you could pull up the site plan, please. There are the, the three on, on East Piedmont, the lowest one there, or the kind of the most eastern one there is, is signalized. And then there are three access points along Sandy Plains, and then one access point on Post Oak Tritt. And so, Commissioner, you're correct, that we paid the closest attention to have had the most conversation about are the, the access point, the access point on Sandy Plains across from Ken Jack, as well as the access point on Post Oak Tritt. So for the first one, at Ken Jack, irrespective of other property, it would be ideal to have that access point directly across from, from Ken Jack. However, as you mentioned, and as the attorney mentioned, there are private property matters that disallow that, that connection from being made. So access to that Ken Jack signal really was left with, with two choices. The first is the option that we see here today, which does have an impact internal to the development, because cars are going to have to come up from the development, make a left, then make a right to get to that signal at Ken Jack. So that would be option one. The other option that was discussed earlier in the process was, as you mentioned, Commissioner, an offset signal, which would signalize that main development driveway that you see coming up just to the north of Ken Jack. And so that would offset Ken Jack and the development driveway. Anytime driveways at a signal are offset like that, they have to be split face, which means one side goes, stops, the other side goes and stops. And so, and then the, which impacts the Sandy Plains traffic, because that additional time that's needed for both of those movements to clear. The other impact to Sandy Plains would be, that's then a much longer intersection. So the, the yellow times and the red times for Sandy Plains, those times are set based on how long that distance is. And so the longer that distance is, the more time that traffic engineers need to allow, to allow that tra, that intersection to clear, to make it safe for other traffic, conflicting traffic to enter the intersection. So where this, this plan here has a larger impact internal to the development, the offset signal would have had a larger impact to traffic on Sandy Plains. And then finally, regarding the access point, just as you mentioned, Commissioner, at Post Oak Tritt, that was something that we looked at. It is technically outside the bounds of this property, but an intersection that the development would increase traffic to. And so as we looked at it, and as Amy mentioned, there is an existing crash problem there. And, and that's looking at data from 2017, 18, and 19. So we've tried to look at time pre-COVID to try to get a typical, more or less, traffic pattern in, in history. And so in looking at that pattern, given the proximity to the signal at Post Oak and Sandy Plains, the challenge of turning left across, just as you mentioned, having to turn left across, not just traffic coming at you, but then the two left turn lanes, the through lane, if you're looking to go north on Sandy Plains, it's a very, very difficult movement. And we believe that contribute, contributed to the number of crashes that we saw there. And so in looking at, again, our, our mission of mitigating any impacts, the initial idea was a right in and right out would eliminate it. But there were access concerns then of if you wanted to get to this development or some of the out parcels, some of the challenges that then come from not being able to turn left in directly to that access drive. And so we looked at it, we discussed internally, and are comfortable with allowing that left in, because that's just crossing the two lanes of traffic. But restricting that left out, just for the reasons that have been mentioned.
Right. So there will be a left turn in off of Post Oak Tritt?
That's correct.
But no left out?
That's correct.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions on traffic?
So just a general inquiry for those that want to go west onto Sandy Plains, you're unable to go through the bottle shop, right? So I'm seeing that you, they would have, yes, if they want to, sorry, yes, if they want to go up.
And out to the signal.
And out to the left. They're restricted from being able to make a left out of Post Oak Tritt and then making a left on the Sandy Plains. They can't go through the bottle shop and make a left out of Sandy Plains. At some point, are they going to the right and then making a U-turn?
Potentially. So I'll come over to the site plan.
No, this is the front of the bottle.
Okay, good. So the, in order to go south on Sandy Plains, which I believe is the question, Chairwoman, there are a few, a few options. So you're correct, the, this proposal would not allow the left onto Post Oak, and then the subsequent left onto Sandy Plains. So the options remaining would be to come down to one of these access points through the development onto East Piedmont. And one of the, the opposition did mention the proximity here could potentially be challenging to be able to turn right and then cut over to turn left to go south on Sandy Plains. So it may require one of, one of these two options. The other would be to come through the development driveway to turn left to go through the bottle shop, to make it out to the signal. The bottle shop, the representation did indicate that they were okay with this opening here between the development driveway and the bottle shop. And then the final option, just as you mentioned, would be to, to use one of these points throughout the development to turn right, to go north on Sandy Plains, and then identify either, there's an unsignalized R-cut, which is just basically a left turn lane into the development across the street, that could be available for a U-turn there. Or someone could come all the way up to Post Oak Tritt at the signal and make the U-turn there.
It wasn't clear to me that the bottle shop was permitting people to come through that back point and then get to the light. Okay.
They have closed the back entrance, but they have the side entrance open.
Okay.
Commissioners?
Thank you. I'd also like to ask, I guess Bill Rowland, or is it Debbie or Brian here? Okay. Do you, do you want to answer the 55, the age restriction, 55 and older in Fair Housing Act?
That'd be fine, yes.
Okay. There's been a lot of discussion with emails and social media regarding the 55 and older age-restricted apartments for rent. The, at the Planning Commission, I believe, our county attorney, Brian Johnson, gave the interpretation of the Fair Housing Act, the minimum 80%. And also, the applicant has stated in their STIP letter that no less than 80%, which is a Fair Housing Act federal law, no less than 80% will, will be 55 and older at any given time.
That's correct. So that would, if, if that stipulation is approved as part of this agreement, then that would move forward with the, with, as a condition of the land as part of the development.
Right. So they would, they would not, 80% is a federal law. So no more than, or minimum 80% would always be 55 and older at any given time.
Correct.
And we can enforce that as a STIP, and it will also be on their lease. If they, if a senior comes to rent an apartment there, it'll be in the lease that they are age-restricted to 55 and older. 20%, the minimum 80%, which leaves 20% non-age-restricted by law, by federal law, would be equivalent to about 26 apartments that could be non-age-restricted out of 132. So I'm just putting the facts out there so that, you know, everybody knows what these apartments are, because they, they will remain 55 and older age-restricted. And that's a Fair Housing Act. Our attorneys do know the law. And we have been sued for the Fair Housing Act in the past. And they do know the law. And I know that there's some non-attorneys that have been commenting on discussions with HUD and, and other, I guess, federal agencies. But I'm relying on our expert staff and attorneys for this one. So I just wanted to clarify that stipulation. Okay. Most of what we heard was, was regarding the traffic. And you've seen from both sides what, what we're dealing with here. When this case, when this, when Sprayberry Crossing was first developed in the 70s, it was actually a result of a lawsuit. In 2013, it was identified as an eligible property for the Commercial and Industrial Rehab Program. It was one of 38 sites on the redevelopment list for the county in 2013, one of 38 throughout the county. District 3 had 17. It was one of 17 in my district in 13, 2013. So Sprayberry Crossing, as all the emails have said, has been an eyesore and for 25 years. And something in disrepair like that, that's been on the redevelopment list, that didn't just start when this application was filed. There have been numerous attempts to redevelop this in the past. My two predecessors worked to do that as well. I've, I've been working on this for the 10 years I've been here, over 10 years. And I just stacked up some files of Sprayberry Crossing that I have been dealing with my entire tenure here. So it didn't just start two years ago. I do appreciate the, the folks that have started a community campaign to get this redeveloped. Joe and Shane got the community together. We had a meeting at Sprayberry Auditorium three, three years ago, four years ago, and had 600 people there. So it has been on the radar for quite some time, just in my tenure. And like I said, it is on the redevelopment list, rehab list, and it is, it is eligible for credit. credits, tax credits and incentives. To my knowledge and speaking with staff, the, to date, no applications have been submitted for this program, but they are eligible, and that's been in place since it was put on the redevelopment list in 2013. I have sent many potential buyers, owners, to the owners and management company for, since I've been here. The feedback was, it's not for sale, they're asking too much, or not enough acreage. The obstacles to this, it's very challenging. The layout here is very challenging as far as developing this site. You have a cemetery in the middle of it. And the owners actually got the title to, quite titled to the cemetery so that it could stay there and be preserved for the family that has loved ones buried there. And as you can see from the STIP letter, the renditions of the improvements that they will be making to the cemetery for the Mays family that have family buried there. That has been vetted through the Cemetery Preservation Committee. They have approved the cemetery improvements. And that's, that's in the STIP letter as well. There's also been a lot of discussion about the county not doing their job and not doing anything at this, with this development. As you can see, there's a stack yea-ha down below, and that's just in the past. I have three or four files up here with me for discussion today that result in this The county hosted a meeting in, I think, in March of 17 at Spraberry High School, which I mentioned. 500 people attended in the auditorium, and 100 were standing outside because of the capacity inside didn't allow the other 100. So they, it was packed. And at that meeting, I had requested staff to present some of the things that had been done and the process of what we had done in the past regarding code enforcement and calls and everything regarding Spraberry Crossing. In March 28 of 2017, the county filed a nuisance abatement complaint against Spraberry Crossing. That was March 28, 17. Then the owner, property owner, made the proper improvements from the complaint, and that was closed out in August of 17. Then in July of 17, 2017, we adopted our Community Improvement Tax Incentive Ordinance, better known as the BLIT tax. Spraberry Crossing was the first case to go to magistrate court under the new BLIT tax ordinance. And the judge ruled that the bowling alley was deemed blighted on April 22, 2018. And I would like to submit the court order for the record of that, of that, of the BLIT tax ordinance. And I apologize, but bear with me because all this needs to be addressed. If I could submit that to the clerk for the record, that's the nuisance abatement order. I mean, the BLIT tax ordinance, order. Okay, and with the BLIT tax, you know, the, it was only on the bowling alley because that's the only building that actually qualified. We've done numerous inspections since then and prior to that. But the Spraberry Crossing has paid the seven times the amount, $21,756, $21,756, to the county general fund in 2019 and 2020. In 2018, prior to the BLIT tax, the taxes were $3,108. So they have been paying the BLIT tax fee for this property pursuant to the court order that was just submitted. So prior to the BLIT tax, I want to submit for the record the code enforcement report and also the police report. Code enforcement and police resources have continually monitored this property throughout the years. It's private property. We can't force the owners to sell, but we can keep them in compliance with code, and that's what we have done with the nuisance abatement complaint, now the BLIT tax ordinance and fees, and continually monitoring this. So from June of 2016, five years, to May of 2021, the police report shows 127 calls ranging from burglary, theft, suspicious persons, auto accidents, verbal disputes, disorderly conduct, illegal drugs, fire alarms, ordinance violations, hit and runs, and drunk persons. So, and then that was 127 calls to the police for various violations or accidents, what have you. And I would like to submit the police report for the record as well. In addition to the 127 calls for the police for burglary and the things I just mentioned, 193 zone patrols have occurred throughout the property for that same timeframe, June 2016 to May of 2021, end of May 2021. So if you think the county hasn't done anything, I think that speaks volumes to the resources that we have from police, and I'm getting to code enforcement next, of what we have done that we legally can do to monitor this site and try to make it better for the community. So, that's police. The code enforcement report shows 391 code enforcement complaints since 2004. 391 code enforcement complaints since 2004, not the last two, three years, since 2004. And I would like to enter that for the record as well. And that also includes inspections that were done, not just calls or complaints on various code enforcement violations. With respect to the code, this code has, was established in 2006. It's never been used until this case. When we, when we heard code amendments in February, I asked that this code be removed. It's not needed, it had never been used, and to me, it's flawed. There's been objections from the public on this code and even arguments with legal on this code, and I recommended that it be removed. Number was my second, and as you know, because this code, this case was still pending and had been continued and was still pending, staff recommended that we not allow any new ROD applications until this case could be settled. But I can assure you, I will recommend that it be removed again when the time comes for code amendments, and I sincerely hope we can, we can do that. The code does allow for apartments, and it also says they will not set a precedent. They're initially, I mean, I was the first to say no apartments, it's Spraberry Crossing, but they were proposed anyhow. So, meaning with the opposition told them of a plan that we had requested to remove the multifamily apartments and only have age restricted, which that number was even reduced from the initial five stories, four stories, now three stories. And it was stated that that was something we could all support, and now it's still, it's still out there. So they have waived the low income percentage that is also a requirement. So there are variances on this case, but most of these are to the benefit of the community that wanted this. So, you know, the 20% retail, which is also a requirement, I've asked staff to calculate that, I've asked the applicant, I've asked a lot of folks, I know Commissioner Gamble has some thoughts on that, and she can weigh in whenever she wants. But, you know, there are other variances that benefit the community, and with the calculation of the 34 square feet in retail and the grocery, and then the shops underneath the three-story senior housing, I don't, I don't know if that will equal 20% or not. But how do you calculate the cemetery? I think it's approximately, what, five acres? Do you know, John, or?
The cemetery?
Mm-hmm. Oh, it's one acre, I'm sorry. Okay. So how do you calculate that into retail or residential? You don't. So if they don't have the 20% retail, yes, that is a variance. But like I said, we've got the low income requirement in the rod that is being waived, and we have the apartments that are allowed that don't set a precedent, and with the apartments age restricted, they are age restricted and will remain age restricted. So, yes, it does have variances, and the code is not what I would recommend, but it's out there, and it's a code, and it's actually not a zoning code, it's a Planning Division So I can't delete it to another zoning category because it's not a zoning. So we talked, I talked about the ROD code and trying to remove it from the ordinances. There have been several site plans submitted. As you know, when it first started out, when it was first proposed back in, or submitted back in August of last year, it was five stories, multifamily apartments and senior apartments, five stories. And we saw different renditions with the applicant meeting with various groups, community And I had several call, several meetings prior to, prior to this, but also once this was filed. Unfortunately, most of them had to be virtual because of COVID, but I have had in-person meetings as well this year, and my planning commissioners as well, with residents, developers, staff, just, you know, this has been a work in progress for several years. I know that there, there was some concern by the, a lot of the folks in support, when the multifamily apartments were removed and the, and the green space was taken away for a community park. And I understand the green space and that, but in order to remove the multifamily apartments, which was the majority of the opposition, you saw the petition submitted today. That was a big obstacle that we overcame, and, you know, I think all in all, that this, this plan without the multifamily apartments is, you know, something that was asked for and has a lot of support as well. There is a new park, Ebenezer Downs, which is 3.8 miles from Spraberry Crossing on Ebenezer, near the Canton Road intersection. It's on the SLOWS list next year for redevelopment, for development. It's a passive park, and it was purchased with Parks Bond money. And then you also have Mayberry Park, which is developed, that's five miles away at Wesley Chapel in Sandy Plains. So the current, the current site plan that you see here today has three-story senior apartments, and you've seen the renderings for that, and 102 townhomes for sale, and the 34,000 square foot grocery. We talked about the minimum 80% Fair Housing Act, and that will stand, the 102 townhomes with a cap of 10% rental. That will be, that is stated in the STIP letter, which is enforceable, and also will be on the HOA covenants for the townhomes so that they cannot have more than 10% rented out at any time. And there's the architectural style that was submitted for the townhomes before anything is approved on that, if this goes through, the, before the district commissioner approves it. the, before the district commissioner approves any elevations or drawings on the townhomes, they will go to the design review committee that was formed in the, with the developer in the past for the architectural style and elevations for their review. And those committee members are Shane Spink, Joe Glancy, Tony Martin, Elizabeth Treadwell, and Katrina Blowball. And that's for the townhomes. So before anything is approved on that, which has to come back to the district commissioner for final approval, they will have a chance to look at it and give their input. This, the plan that you see before you today is not a perfect plan by any means. There is no perfect plan, to my knowledge. And anything that goes here, anything that goes here is going to obviously increase traffic on, on the roads surrounding this. I mean, you can't take a vacant property, 17-plus acres, and not think that a development that comes in for rezoning or redevelopment is not going to increase the traffic. Granted, it is bad there. I live a mile from here myself. And I travel this area practically every day. And pre-COVID, it was, it is bad. And anything that goes here is going to make it, is going to create an increase in traffic. However, this plan is an improvement of the levels of service over the initial plan or even the plan submitted after the initial plan of five stories. And more density, more, more units. And then is proposed now. And you've seen several site plans from five, four stories now to three stories and only senior apartments. So it's not a perfect plan. And I don't know that there would ever be a perfect plan. But it's what's before us today and what is being proposed. And so I'm just stating some facts here. We also have a school, the school board always sends us a recommendation of approval or, or denial. And they have weighed in that this plan will not have a negative impact and have given their approval. And that was even on the initial plan with the higher density. So with this traffic plan, you heard from the attorney for the bottle shop. We, we don't have access straight through to Kenjacket, the signal. And this is what is agreed upon. So if there is stacking or backup, it will be internal. And it will not push it out to Sandy Plains. So, you know, Sandy Plains is bad enough now. We can't put anymore out there on purpose. So I think that this is what we have before us. So once, if this is approved today and if this goes, goes to plan review and DOT or anything else is revised or, or presented with comments at plan review, then any changes to this site plan would come back through other business and would be a public hearing for the community and, and everyone to weigh in. I'm sorry. I apologize, but this all needs to be said. And this is just the start of the discussion.
Okay.
Yes, I know you're going to have a motion. And I don't know how much of this will be included in your motion as well. Because I presume that some of the issues that you're addressing in your comments will be also incorporated.
Okay.
I don't want to rush you. I know you've been, as you're sharing here, you've been working on this at length. And I think it's important for you to clarify to those who are here today, who are watching, why you're going to be voting the way that you do. I just want to be mindful.
Yeah, well, okay. So you've seen the, the traffic scenario. I, I just want to say that if anything changes, then it would come back through other business. And we talked about the safety issue with the left out on Post Oak Trip and the crashes, the 12 crashes from the driveway over the last three years. The cemetery improvements that have been made and submitted with the STIP letter. The water and sewer, this is going to be underground detention. And there were some, there were some concerns with sewer about the adjoining neighbors. But that all has been worked out. And they, they will retain water service through the, the construction of this, this project. Also, the left turnout at Sandy Plains, I mean, at Post Oak Trip to Sandy Plains will remain during the construction. But it won't be restricted until this project is completed. Okay, so I think I'm ready to make a motion unless anybody has any other questions.
How many U-turns?
This cannot be tolerated. This, and we've already addressed it.
I apologize, ma'am, but listen, her side alone is just worthless.
Commissioner, you can continue.
Okay. One thing I would like to say is the numerous emails we have received, I have read them all. Most of you have gotten a general response because of the volume. And we had to create a folder just for Spraberry Crossing, if you will. I have read them all. I have responded back to clarify some things on, on some, not all, because of time. But I have read them all. And again, there's as many or more in support as there are against. And you've seen several site plans and revisions to this project for the last year. And this is what's before us today. So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve ROD 1 with the STIP letter from Mr. Kevin Moore dated May 26, 2021, and revised site plan submitted June 11, 21, 2021. Final site plan to be approved by district commissioner. Elevation of townhomes to be, to be reviewed by design review committee prior to district commissioner approval. Maximum of 70% impervious surface. And all the reports and all that I've submitted for the record, code enforcement, police, blight tax, and all staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Thank you, is there a second? I'll second, is there any further discussion?
Yes, Commissioner. Okay, I am not going to be able to support this application. And part of this discussion is that it's a redevelopment overlay development, and it can be done on a CAC or a RAC. What I find interesting is that the density of the housing on this is what you would find in a RAC, not in a CAC. And this is nowhere located near a regional activity center. In addition, the applicant is asking for a 20 to possibly 30% reduction in parking. That's huge, in my opinion, especially in an area where there's no transit. So how are these seniors going to have a 20 to 30% reduction in, in parking, going to be able to access medical and other such amenities that they require on a daily basis if we reduce the number of parking? Of course, you could say it's going to overflow parking into where they have the commercial. And the commercial, essentially, I found it an easy calculation is they gave us the acreage of what the commercial was going to be. And I divided it by the total acreage and came up with 16.1%. Again, that does not meet code. The only additional parking, if we reduce the internal parking, would be the parking that is adjacent to Sandy Plains Road, which then again means that we have seniors walking through the development to access their homes when we know that this is going to drive a large volume of traffic on a daily basis. So I, I see a safety issue here. Also, they're asking to waive the variance for affordability requirement, which was specified in the code. And again, I just don't see this as a redevelopment that is in keeping with what a community activity center should be.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrow?
Yes. John, you may be able to speak to the parking. I thought the shared parking was part of the requirement.
Yeah, the ROD code does allow shared parking and parking reductions based on a certain formula. And right now, they're required to have 610 parking spaces. They show 590 on the site plan. But through the ROD code, which allows a 20% reduction, they can go down to 488 parking spaces by operation of code. And past that, the code allows the director of community development to give administrative variance for an additional 10%. So that could take it down to 427 parking spaces. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the parking is met.
From what I see here, Commissioner, excuse me, they're proposing 590 parking spaces.
Correct.
That's above the 427 minimum requirement.
Right. That's what I was referring to, the shared parking and the reduction.
Okay. However. Commissioner, Commissioner Burrow still has her mic on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Commissioner Gamble, would you like to address that?
It was noted in staff comments under the variances that they were going to reduce to 488 and then another 10% to 427. In addition, on the site plan that we're considering that's dated 5/26 of 2021, it says that they are having 488 spaces with a 20% reduction.
Okay, if we can have the applicant come forward and just clarify the number of parking spaces. And again, what I'm reading here is that there's a minimum code requirement of 427.
Sure, I'd be happy to clarify.
Thank you.
Per our plan, when you review the parking, they're listing both the parking that's required as well as the parking that's provided. And went through the same analysis that Mr. Peterson just did. And that is that we are providing 590 spaces for this site plan.
Thank you.
Which exceeds the minimum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burrow, you can continue.
Yeah. So the, the 610 spaces that are required is before the 20% reduction?
That's correct. 600 number before you apply the reduction.
Okay. And you're providing 590, which exceeds the amount with the 20% reduction that's allowed in the rod.
That's correct.
Is that correct, John?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
See, that's 610 are required by 590. Okay.
So it needs a parking requirement.
It does, it exceeds.
It exceeds the parking requirement.
Okay. That's all I have, the motion and the second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we'll call the question. Okay. It's not working. All right, those in favor of the motion as presented, please raise your hand. Those opposed, please raise your hand. The motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition. We're going to take a recess for 10 minutes and come back at 6:35.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
Hello, we are now resuming our June 15th Board of Commissioners zoning hearings. John, if you can let us know what our next case is?
Yes, ma'am. Next case is rezoning case Z21 of 2021. Swamine LLC requests rezoning from GC to NRC for a package store in Land Lot 866 of the 19th District. The property is located on the south side of Powder Springs Road, on the east side of Sanders Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z21? Please stand up, raise your hand. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z21? Okay, would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning.
Sir, yes. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning to all Board of members. My name is Malik Patel. I'm the applicant of Z21 Swamine LLC. I'm the owner of the property. My property is around 2.5 acres and I have the existing gas station on my property. And I'm applying for the rezoning of my property to GC to NRC to addition to the building, to my existing building, so I can put another retail business, which I'm proposed for the, to build a package store in addition to building. On the applicant meetings, they make me some recommendation, which I already submit in a plan, site plan, like diesel lane and covering gutters to Powder Springs and sidewalks on the Sanders Road, which I already have that. Also donate the five feet to the county on the Sanders Road. And the last Board of the meeting, they recommend some changes to be applied, which is like the county wants me to make me to like the proposed building and existing building may be enclosed in the between, which is not required, but they suggest me to do that. So I'm working on it there. And it's definitely, if it's possible, I'm going to be enclosed that part two. Also, they recommend me for the like dumpster enclosure and with the metal gate. And definitely, I'm going to do that also. And also, they want me to do a paving on the back side, so that's where when the dumpster come, it don't have to be back up to the Sanders Road. They can turn around when they come in the service, so I will work on that too. And also, like they want me to like my, the front side of the existing building and on the proposed building has to be a same, looks like same. So whatever I'm going to be put on the proposed building is a brick or stack stone, I'm going to be match up with the existing building, so all the looks like same and nice. Also about the gas, they want me to like a gas canopy be renovated. And yes, definitely, just adding on that, like, you know, I just renewed my gas contract recently. So my jobber, he's going to be re-rap the canopy and we bringing the chavron, upgrading our, the brands. And also, my jobbers is going to be replacing all the pumps to make like a new pump so that people can use Android Pay and contactless payment, all the high tax pumps, they're going to put it up. And I have some image for the chavron, which is going to be put it up, so I want to show you, guys. So this is the new image. We're going to be bring the chavron on that property, which is like a level one. So it's lead up like a three sides with like chavrons, so it's just lift up the whole property value and and bringing the new brands. Also, the county wants me to add the like landscaping plan on that with the site plan. So yes, definitely, I'm going to be add some landscaping on that too, called by the county. The county wants me to like, you know, the existing pile on sign need to be removed and be replaced, the ground base, the sign. I'm just want to let you know, like, you know, my jobber, he's working on it right now, so he's trying, he's working according to the Cobb County law because that is a part of his jobbers. So he's working on it that. And also, the county wants me to like, you know, a 25% window area has to no sign. So only minimize. And as far as the last meeting, I assure that I'm trying to be minimize that 25% sign on the window, which I already did that. And I have the... So this is, this is the existing building and you can see that, like, you know, I already removed all the signs from the window. So it's minimized like 25% on that. Also, county wants me to do like the back, my background with the non-wooden fencing. So yes, I'm definitely work on it and I'm trying to be cover my property on the backside with the metal fencing. And also, like, you know, I'm ready to do any, like, you know, suggestion or any recommendation, I will apply as far as you guys tell me. So the whole idea is to make, because my property is too big and I want to be, like, you know, put another, like, you know, retail space. I want to add on that so I can make like, you know, a huge building and try to be, make like, you know, lift up the property value. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Considering there's no opposition, I'll just turn things over to you, Commissioner.
I have a question. With respect to the 25% of the window area that's not to be covered, is that for the existing building or the new building or combination of both?
No, the 25% is like a Cobb County law, like, you know, I cannot, like, we cannot put like more than 25% advertised. And normally, what happened, like, you know, sometime when the salesmen come without, we are not being there all the time. So they don't even let us know sometime and they just put, cover the sign on the window. So now already strictly to tell them, like, we don't want to put any sign over there. So, yeah, it's going to be applied on the whole property.
Okay. All right. John, can I just amend a couple of the steps in this letter? Okay.
And just want to add one more thing. So this is just like, the additional is just for the retail space. Because the legal license, we are, I'm not applying right now for a legal license because that's a completely separate process. I had to do the rezoning process, so that's why here is the rezoning process for the addition, the building.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
John, for special step 1B that speaks to the dumpster. If we can also include that the dumpster enclosure is to include doors. And at no time should the dumpster be located outside of the enclosure. And also for step number 11 that speaks to fencing. All fencing to be non-wooded, to be non-wooded nor chain link fencing and to be approved by the county commissioner. Mr. Patel?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm very excited about your desire to reinvest in your business and also in the community. I lived in Powder Springs for 13 years and I passed by that establishment.
Yes, ma'am. This is a very old...
We're very... Yeah.
People call it movie theater and when I just, I've been there like 2017. It's only like four years for me. And I really wants to do, try to be lift up my property.
Sure.
And that's reason I'm working on it to be like, it's look like a strip place, plaza. And so in, of course, like, you know, it brings like tax revenue and also the lift of the property value around the neighbors to go up and if I'm going to do any upgrades on that.
Sure. And what is your timeframe for renovations or for the remodel?
Well, I had to be do the process. So after the rezoning, I had to be apply for the legal license. And after, if I'm going to be get the legal license, then I'm going to be do all the, like, you know, permitting, engineering, and I'm going to hire engineering and all the due processing for that. And then I'm going to be apply for the building permits and all.
Okay, so what would be your best estimate if you had to guess?
I would say a year, like, you know, it would take like about 12 months, something like that.
Okay.
I'm trying to do fast as much I can, but like, you know, it's all that pandemic, everything running slow. Even I supposed to have the, by the time my gas contract been done in February and I should, I supposed to be have replace the pump, but because of the pandemic, it's running slow. Like, they be behind like 12 weeks, so I still haven't got to replace the pump yet.
Okay, all right, thanks. So while I am excited about the remodel and as you say, lifting the community with reimaging that location, I think that would be a great addition along Powder Springs Road. There is quite a bit of development, as you may or may not know, that's going on, going up near Powder Springs. However, there is a package store approximately one mile from your proposed location. And to have two in such close proximity raises concern for me for public health and safety for the for the community. And to that end, I approve the application with the stipulations, including my amended stipulation of items number 1B and 11. So, John, I approve the application, but I do want to add prohibited uses.
I think, have we made a motion yet?
Okay, no.
Okay, so I think we need to have, just have the chair just pull the board for discussion, then make a motion.
Okay. Before I add prohibited uses?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you can address it now, but whatever you want to be included should be included in part of your motion.
Okay, even prohibited uses?
Yes, definitely, you would include that in your motion.
Okay, well, then I guess I make a motion. Oh. I make a motion to approve the application with the following prohibited uses. Prohibited use of an automotive paint and/or body repair shop. Prohibited use of an automotive repair shop, tire shop, prohibited use of a tire shop. Prohibited use of the sale of adult themed books, magazines, or materials. Prohibited use of dollar stores and/or discounted merchandise stores. And prohibited use of a package store. So with that, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Commissioner Richardson, did you have a... Okay, Commissioner Gamble, did you have a question?
But his application is specifically for a package store.
Yeah, I'm aware.
But we just prohibit him from being a package store.
Yeah, I'm aware. So his zoning is shifting, excuse me. His zoning request is from GC to NRC. And what I see here is for package store and convenience store with fuel sales as the request under NRC.
Right.
And what I'm hearing is you are in support of the convenience store with fuel sales, but not the package store.
Correct.
Okay. Correct. A question for staff. Would the applicant have to go through a separate process for the package store?
Correct.
Okay, so what would we be facilitating if that was included here? Because we wouldn't be able to determine whether or not he would be able to sell additional alcohol that would have to go through the business license process.
Well, you know, say Commissioner Sheffield's motion passes to prohibit the package store, then that application for the alcohol beverage license would not even be accepted by our business license division.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Got a question. So I cannot build a package store?
Per, I'm sorry, for clarification, I'll allow the applicant to clarify her motion. Can you repeat that for me, please?
I just want to, so I cannot build the package store over there?
That is correct. With the motion that she has, you wouldn't be able to apply for a package store.
I cannot.
You would be able, yes, for the zoning request, I see it's requesting a package store and convenience store with fuel sales, moving from the general commercial district to the neighborhood retail commercial district. What she is supportive of is the change of zoning to neighborhood retail commercial to facilitate the convenience store with fuel sales. She's not supportive of the package store element of that.
Okay, because I already have the gas station and convenience store over there existing building. So that's the reason I was thinking it would be like, I'm selling alcohol anyway in my convenience store. So I was thinking, like, you know, if I'm gonna build a liquor store, it's gonna be one-stop shop. That's the reason I just apply for the package store.
Or else you wouldn't have come forward.
That's the only reason I want to do the package store over there.
Okay. So are you suggesting that it is not your intent to reinvest in the community and bring up property values by renovating your business?
Yeah, but I already have the gas station. I'm doing still the, like, gas station renovation and everything, but like, you know, my whole purpose was to build the package store over there.
Oh, I thought the whole purpose was to lift up the values of the community, as you just communicated earlier.
Yeah, because, because I'm gonna be, once I'm gonna build a package store, I had to be do all the remodeling with the gas station and all trying to be like, you know, all that stuff together, put it over there.
I see.
Thank you.
My motion stands?
Her motion still stands, sir. Thank you. You can, yes, I think you can have a seat unless we have any additional questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I'm in support of the motion and recognize the concern for having additional alcohol sales. I know he was prompted to come before zoning for the package store, but I just want to let you know that should he move, should he desire to go through the business license process for alcohol, that would still end up coming before the board for approval. So I'm amenable to what you want to do, I just wanted to share that. We'll just roll on and then we'll turn. It's up to, your motion still, your motion is still standing. Yes, Commissioner Gamble.
But I guess if he's already got the convenience and the fuel sales there, your motion to approve, shouldn't it be a motion to deny because you're denying the package store, which is what this application is about?
No, what I'm approving is his application for rezoning. Now, what he decides to put on there is a separate matter.
Yeah, so...
Because he's still building out retail space.
Right, but he just said if you're gonna deny him the package sale, he's not going to build it out, which means it's going to remain the same.
It will not remain the same because I just made a motion to approve the change to rezon the...
If I may interject and ask for staff's assistance, certainly the purpose, he was driven to apply for the purpose of a package store. However, there's still a zoning that's before the board that would have to facilitate that to move that property from general commercial to neighborhood retail commercial. So what's before us is the rezoning itself.
That is correct. And, you know, the property is currently, currently is on general commercial in our neighborhood activity center. So right now, the zoning does not match up with future land use. So it's kind of stuck in time, as is right now. If we rezon it to NRC, then that gives the applicant the ability to redevelop in the future for all the uses that are not prohibited. You know, she prohibited liquor store, auto paint and body, auto repair, tire shops, things like that. But he can do everything else in NRC if he wants to redevelop and do something else.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Richardson?
Does the current development here comply with NRC?
The current use of the property does comply with NRC. And, you know, just to clear, clarify things a little bit, you know, he's asking for a package store, but, you know, he currently has a liquor license for beer, wine, and Sunday sales. So he really just wants to do the liquor part of the business.
Right, I just, I understand. I just want to make sure if we're approving the zoning change, what is, does, is there a retroactive impact to the current establishment?
No.
So he currently has a beer and wine sales for the convenience store?
Yes.
And it's operating?
Correct.
Okay, so you're just prohibiting another building that would be a package store?
Right.
And the other prohibited uses?
Right.
Okay.
But it's not going, it's not going...
Means to prohibit the use at his current location, obviously.
Right, right. Okay. All right, we have a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? We'll call the question. Okay, the motion carries for one with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Okay, next case is SLEPT 2 of 2021, Diamond Towers. Request a special land use permit for a cell tower in land lot 256 of the 20th District. Property is located on the southeast side of Kennesaw-DuWes Road, south of Frank Kirk Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEPT? Please stand up, raise your hands. Got two. Let's direct show that there are two people here in opposition. Would the applicant and opposition please come forward and be sworn in?
Excuse me. It is, I feel like they're trying to warm it up. I guess we're not breaking.
This is where the temperature factor is important.
Good job, you should be here too.
How are you?
Good.
Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. It just hit good afternoon.
Yep, you're right. I'm Bev Francis, 112 East Pecan, San Antonio. First and foremost, I'd like to take a minute to thank John and Jeannie. They have been amazing to work with over the last year, going through over 300 pages of our submittals. The books we have provided you are, the first section is a copy of the PowerPoint we'll be working through. Then a table of contents that will lay out for you the documents which will be referred to and hopefully questions asked about. Tom Meneski will quickly go through with you the site plan and radio frequency maps. Lynn Lindros and Mark Cabden with AT&amp;T are here to answer any questions on that. Cole Edmondson, a structural engineer with Kimberly-Horn, will address you regarding the structural analysis. And then Bo Simpson with Graystone Valuation will discuss with you his research and conclusion that this tower will have no destructive effect on the value of the surrounding property. So Tom Meneski will walk through the first part.
Thank you for hearing from us today. So Diamond Towers is proposing a 150-foot monopine, a cell tower that's shaped like a tree. We're, at the last two planning commissions, what we've done is we've moved the compound location at the rear of the Thankful Baptist Church away from the property, further away from the property line. Our monopine is contained within a 60-by-60-foot compound within 100-by-100-foot least area. That 100-foot, 150-foot monopine has a breakpoint of 75 feet. Under the code, that requires an extra 10% as a fall zone radius. That's what this exhibit depicts, is both the fall zone radius and the extra 10%. As you can see, we're still 110 feet away from the nearest property line to the east. One of the changes that we also made through the planning commission was that we changed from a chain link fence with barbed wire, which was set under the code, to a stockade board-on-board type fence that is eight feet tall with no barbed wire. This would blend in better with the area and would still be anti-climbing per code. This shows what we're looking at as far as the monopine. It shows that the top of the steel is 150 feet with the five-foot lightning rod. There will be a taper on top. This is just to show you the, where the antennas are for AT&amp;T at the 145-foot level. This also shows that we allow for three additional co-locators on the existing pole. One thing that we also did through the planning commission was we added a landscape buffer. We added an additional 20 feet on each side of the compound, except for the front, where we have to be able to get in to the compound area. One thing I also wanted to note on the monopine is it's two and a half branches per foot. You're gonna see an example of that picture, it's in your exhibits, but also just to show you the depth of the trees, unlike some of the ones that are actually located currently in Cobb County. Just to show you what the rear of the property looks like, where the compound is located, as you can see, the points are all pointing to the left of the old compound. That's because we had shifted compound, we wanted to show you exactly where the photos were being taken to. And working from west to east, this is looking from the rear of the church. We are in the treed area, behind the playground area, in the trees. We're not in the lawn, so we'll be going back there. One of our stipulations was that any trees that we take down will be replaced as part of, in addition to the landscaping plan that's currently provided. This is the center shot. Again, we're in the treed area, behind the church. And the third shot is looking across, we're in the treed area, past the basketball court, again, through the trees. The trees here are ranging height from 80 feet to over 100 feet in this area. This is an example of a tower we have actually built. This is a monopine. That fence is only six feet tall, but it is the same wood construction. Ours would be eight feet tall, so it would be two feet taller than that, but the same board-on-board type construction. One of the reasons that we're here, we have AT&amp;T here to testify to the maps, but in the interest of time, I'm gonna run into it, is that there is a substantial gap in AT&amp;T's coverage in this portion of Cobb County. Diamond was assigned the search ring. This is what is the existing coverage in that area currently. Our site is shown at the center of the screen. It's indicated with the last couple letters, 234, sorry, a couple numbers, 2341. The existing AT&amp;T sites are all the other sites that have the GNL in front of them. What we also did through the planning commission testimony was show that there is a, there's a Verizon Tower to the north, up on Beaumont Drive, as well as there is a, another school, Pine Mountain Middle School, which would be an additional educational property or church property that's allowed under your ordinance, that would also allow a tower. Both the Verizon Tower and the existing school property are within the coverage of the existing AT&amp;T Tower to the north, right on Stilesboro Road and Kennesaw-DuWes Road. So that's the coverage area as it exists today. If this site was allowed to be built with AT&amp;T's antennas at the 145-foot level, it would fill that gap substantially. There's still little remnants of coverage that need to be filled towards the bottom. The area of Cobb County is extremely rolling in this particular area, along with lots of trees, and that's what gives you the gradations in color. But this would fill the height, the height here would fill that gap. So I'm gonna move on to the structural part.
My name is Cole Edmondson. I'm a structural engineer with Kimberly-Horn and Associates. I've been tasked with reviewing documents provided by Saber Industries, the tower engineer, to determine whether or not they have adequately provided a 75-foot engineered fall zone or breakpoint, as referenced in the Cobb County code. In short, it does. So the specifics of my opinion are provided here on the screen, as well as in the documents provided to you. But they have basically dosed the highest stress ratio right at the 75-foot mark. So in short, the entire tower is designed per the code with basically over strength provided everywhere but the 75-foot mark. The basis of my opinion was information provided by Saber. So not only a letter from Saber Industries, their design engineer, which is helpful, certainly relevant, but the meat of it was the calculations and tower specifications provided as well. So in this exhibit right here, they show the, so CSR is critical stress ratio, which again, is equal to one in this case. And that is shown right here in their calculation package. So again, in short, the entire, the entire tower is designed for the wind loads prescribed in the code. And they've provided over strength in every location but the 75-foot mark with about an 11% difference between the weakest point, which again, still meets code, and the over strength areas.
Hello, my name is Bo Simpson. I live at 2368 Academy Court in DeKalb County in Atlanta, Georgia. My office is here on Wendy Hill Road in Cobb County. I've been appraising property in Atlanta for over 30 years. And I was asked to do a study specifically on this proposed tower to determine whether or not it would have any adverse influence on property values. And so Cobb County is a good place to do a study like this, because there's a lot of data. You probably have this notebook that I have, if you are interested, you could turn to tab six, which is where my study is contained. And basically, we found a number of examples that are similar to this, or maybe even more intrusive, if you will. And that, by that, I mean, it's not disguised as a pine tree, or it's even closer to homes. And we looked at empirical data, sales close to towers, compared them with similar properties not close to towers. We also interviewed a lot of people, realtors and homeowners. And it was fairly easy to conclude that this tower would not have an adverse impact on the surrounding properties. I'd be glad to answer any questions. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Beau. As you know, under your code, towers are permitted in residential districts, and as long as they're located on non-residential uses, such as schools, such as churches, and this site, as you're aware, is on a church facility. Very quickly, I know the county attorney and the deputy county attorney have briefed you on the interaction between the federal law and the zoning enactment such as this. And just even though this has been discussed, I'm sure, with you, but for the purpose of the people in the audience and people watching this on television, federal law preempts your ability to make a zoning decision based on the effects, if any, of radio frequency emissions. And just for a quickly review, it's been thoroughly analyzed by many of the major organizations to conclude that there is no increased risk. In conclusion...
Chair, when I would...
I'm sorry?
If I could say, as reference to the federal law, there are as requirement for them to be able to have sufficient time to be able to lay the foundation of their case. If, and I know that they've been very efficient during this period of time, but if they need some additional time, I would recommend that the board consider that if there's additional time that they want to be able to have.
Okay.
To visit a reasonable amount of time.
I'm almost through with my conclusion. Thank you.
And, you know, please continue, and I'll address that after.
Thank you. I just have a final statement.
Thank you.
Ma'am, chair members of the commission, this has been thoroughly analyzed by your staff. It's been thoroughly analyzed and reviewed by your outside consultant, Cityscape, Rick Edwards. We appreciate their detailed analysis, and we appreciate staff's recommendation. Also, Cityscape has also validated and concurs with what Tom indicated and the AT&amp;T representatives are here to establish for you and established at the planning commission. There is a significant gap. This tower will resolve this gap. There are no alternative sites available to resolve this gap. And as federal law has indicated, therefore, denial of this without substantial evidence otherwise will effectively be a deemed prohibition of service, and under the September order would materially inhibit AT&amp;T's ability. So thank you for the additional time. Thank you for your consideration. We look forward to a discussion and the ability to answer the questions, and we respectfully request your approval.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Before we have opposition come up to speak, I want to address the point made by the county attorney. Opposition will have one minute and seven seconds to speak when they do come up before the commissioners. Bill, I know he did address part of the consideration of the board for denial. I know in times past, this has been quite a weighty matter for us to consider, and there has been a lot of consideration for the federal law. I don't know if you would like to lay the groundwork for that?
If we may, I think if, just as far as if we could hear from the opposition first and then allow...
Yes.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Yep, great. Thank you. Okay, those here in opposition, you'll have 11 minutes and seven seconds.
Hi, my name is Ricky Stevens. I live at 937 Frank Kirk Road. I live next to the church. I have documents here from Paul Samuel. I would like to give this to the commissioner. Here are some pictures of my beautiful backyard I'd like to put on the board. We boarded the church property. This will be next to where the tower will be. Look, that's not a wrong picture there, sir. Sorry. Sorry. This shows my backyard that will be next to where the property will be. And then I have some words here to read from something that somebody had given me. The purpose of this letter is to raise the client's objection to any action Cobb County to approve the SLUR-2 for 2021. Any action by Cobb County to application of the Cobb County zoning ordinance to apply to the impact property, which substantially burdens our enjoyment beyond its present use, is unconstitutional, illegal, null and void, contiguous intaking of any applicant property in violation of just compensation clause of the Fifth Amendment and due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment in the Constitution of the United States, Article 1, Section 1, Paragraph 1 and 2 of the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution of the United States, denying to applicate any economical valuable use of the subject property while not substantially advancing legitimate state interests. Under leidrith and deal with application under the ordinance in any way that constitutes intaking shall be deemed in waivers of sovereigns and indemnity. We reserve all rights tender under the Cobb Code Steinberg Act states constitution. I thank this board, and I wish this board would deny the tower. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon. My name is Billy Brauner. I own the property that joins the church property. And it's been said that the value of our property does not go down. I really don't believe that because when you turn in my driveway, the first thing you're going to see is this great big tower standing above the trees, especially in the wintertime when there's no leaves and stuff on these trees. You're going to have a tower standing 75 feet above the tree lines. So I do believe that this is going to be, or would cause my property value to go down. I don't know if anyone here would, when they drive, turn in your driveway, they're going to see that pretty picture standing there, you know, and they're going to love it. So I just wanted to say that I do think it's going to affect the value of my property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in opposition? Commissioner Gambra. Excuse me, before you speak, Commissioner Gambra, I recall we're going to have our county attorney address the federal law aspect of this, and then, I'm sorry, Commissioner, we'll turn things back over to you afterward.
Just briefly, as the commissioners are aware, any application needs to be approved by the Cobb County, our Cobb County Code 134273. But some of the considerations that we need to be required to consider as part of this, unlike the mini-cells, who the local, excuse me, Georgia legislation has stripped most of the control from the local ordinances, cell towers does still have some control with local ordinances, but they've been significantly curtailed based upon the Telecommunications Act of 1996. Some of those considerations are that there needs to be no unreasonable discrimination, no prohibitive or effective prohibition of services, action within a reasonable time, that is, a shot clock has to be happening. That's taking place by today, by the hearing that we've had. A denial must be in writing if there is substantial denial, and it must be supported by substantial evidence as well. No consideration of radio frequency emissions has already been referenced during the application. And then ultimately, it'd be expedited review by the courts if something was to be denied at that point in time. A denial must be supported by substantial evidence, which is a legal term of art. It does not mean a large considerable amount of evidence, but rather evidence of a reasonable mind would accept as adequate to support such a conclusion. But simply generalized fears related to safety or property values or aesthetics is not sufficient to support such a generalized view. The county may require that service gaps be closed by the least intrusive means, and we would contend that our particular code does that and addresses these issues.
Thank you, Bill. Does anybody have any questions for Bill regarding what he just shared? All right, Commissioner Gambra.
Thank you. And while I do understand the homeowner's concerns with the visual aspect, as our county attorney said, that isn't sufficient enough to recommend denial. So therefore, I'd like to make the following motion. To approve the tower height to the top of the steel to be 150 feet with a five-foot lightning rod, the applicant may make one modification to 160 feet to the top of the steel with a nine-foot lightning rod, which shall be the one allowable modification under 6409. I would like to also add the following conditions. One, the approved tower height to the top of the steel to be 150 feet with a five-foot lightning rod, as per the overall site plan dated May 17, 2021, to include the landscaping plan and all other attachments. Number two, the tower foundation base structure to be over-engineered to support a 160-foot top-of-street tower and a nine-foot lightning rod with a breakpoint at 80 feet to allow a one-time modification if and when a future provider requests co-location. Such modification will be subject to all applicable Cobb County regulations. Number three, applicant to provide a final site plan for review. Number four, applicant to obtain NEPA and SHPO approvals for the new structure. Number five, applicant to provide a statement that the monopine shall be modified or refreshed as needed to accommodate for aging, fading, and loss of limbs. And number six, all staff comments not in conflict with the above. That is my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's her motion. Is there a second?
Second and discussion?
Oh, yes, discussion. We'll have Commissioner.
I thought you had something.
I did. I'll wait.
Okay. I was just going to ask if a balloon test was done on this, for the site and what it would be 150 feet in the air for the two opposing?
That had not been requested, and I do not believe that was done. Mr. Bebs, can you answer that?
We actually did photo simulations on the property at the appropriate level.
Yes, can you share that with us, please?
Absolutely. It's, if you turn to page, I'm sorry, tab eight, you'll see...
Unfortunately, yes, our book, my book doesn't necessarily have...
I can put them on the screen right now.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
I can give you another book, Chair. Do you ever still have a tab at eight?
Here we go. It may have been pulled out just for convenience of putting it in my book, but I just don't have it tabbed. Okay. Okay, I see. I have it.
This is the key map showing where the locations were taken from. Center of the screen, the red dot is where the tower location is. Photograph number one is the first one from directly, directly across the street. This is the full-on view at the most visible point directly across the street. This is the view. And number two is the, this is the picture from the objector's driveway out front. So this is the, again, all these shots were taken during February with limited leaves on the trees. So that's from there. And then the third shot. I keep forgetting there's a microphone. The third shot is from further to the west at the next intersection, and the tree is not visible behind the tree line there.
Thank you. Commissioner Gambra, did you, I'm sorry, Brauner, did you have any additional questions?
Thank you.
Okay. I did have a question for you, Commissioner Gambra. You stated there can be one modification. Can you clarify what you're referring to? Because I also heard a stipulation with respect to refreshing the pines or needles on the cell tower, and I don't know if you're including that with what you're referring to as a modification.
So under the federal law, that they can go in and increase, they can have one modification under 6409, and that is either a 10% increase or up to 20 feet, whichever is greater. So in my motion, I'm pretty much saying that we'll make one modification up to 160 feet. So as far as the updating of the monopines, that would have been my number five. They could either update them at that time and also increase the height.
Okay. And then for the stipulation letter, which I thought you referred to in your stipulations, it's referring to a total height structure of 165 feet. And then what you just shared is that it can go up to 160 feet per the modification.
There's been several different letters flying around. The one that we have is at 150 feet, which I believe, Mr. Bebs, that is what you would request was 150 feet?
Yes, ma'am, and it gets somewhat confusing. Top of steel, that is the top of the tower, be 150 feet.
Okay.
Antenna, oh, excuse me, lightning rod, five feet. So sometimes it's referred, I think, by your codes, the top of the appearance would be lightning rod, but top of steel would be 160. I understand that the stipulation is there could be a one-time extension to 160 with a nine-foot lightning rod.
Okay, and you're at 150. Okay, which would make sense.
Which is, as the board member, Commissioner, pointed out, would be less than, about approximately 10 feet, less than we'd be permitted under a 6409 modification.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And I'm just asking, and the applicant is agreeable to that stipulation?
We are. Obviously, y'all have been so gracious in this. The problem that we expressed is the spacing requirement, and we're trying to understand the difference between, we're saying 165, which would allow, still be below the 6409 modification, but it would allow more space for a future co-locator because they have, antennas are about eight foot. So you take four foot, drop it down, you already have AT&amp;T at 145 with four foot of the antennas, and putting it at 160, that's rather close. We'd rather, but it's your option certainly, to have the space to allow, to prevent somebody, let's say a carrier comes in and says, well, we need to have 165 so our antennas are safely spaced from AT&amp;T, but we would prefer the 165 just for its safety. Again, this is very speculative.
How many co-locators, yes, how many co-locations can you have on the proposed?
The tower under your code has been engineered to be able to withstand AT&amp;T plus up to three, so it's engineered to handle already AT&amp;T and three.
Okay. And the 160-foot would accommodate that?
Well, the 150 will accommodate that, but a future ability, for say Verizon comes in and says, we really need to prevent having to build another tower, we could need 165 with the cost center, which would be top of steel, basically. So we're concerned that by keeping that at 160, that may prevent a future carrier to have, because of five feet, a need, but we certainly are appreciative of your concern. But that's, would be our definite preference, being still less than they'd be entitled to under 6409.
Okay. So it's possible that if another carrier wanted to come in and it couldn't be accommodated at the 160 feet, they could be requesting another cell phone tower?
Well, if they, if 160 was too low, or they feel like their antennas would be too close to the top of the AT&amp;T antennas, that's why we'd ask for that five-foot cushion, which about that high from the ground. about that high from the ground. Just, and again, this is speculative. We, you know, we don't know, we haven't been approached yet. Obviously, we haven't received your entitlement yet.
Okay. Commissioner, is there any consideration for the 165 versus 160?
No, because as he has repeated several times, it's speculative. Therefore, I would rather be on the conservative side, given the impact of the neighbors.
Okay. And my only concern is they could be impacted even more should another carrier come before us under the federal laws for them to provide coverage and say that it has not been provided and have an argument for putting in another cell phone tower.
Right. And there was documentation originally in with the application that shows where many other cell tower applications have been made and have not been constructed. But they show as active towers, but they've never been constructed.
Okay. Are you saying that we have a zoning that's been approved for other towers that haven't been developed?
Correct. In their application, and I'd have to find the page, but there was like three towers from this site within like three tenths of a mile, which according to code is a violation. However, those towers were never constructed. So again, he is repeatedly saying speculation here or speculative. I'm not sure if this tower will be built.
Okay.
If I may make a point of clarification, thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up. Those were from an FAA map, an FCC map, then Tom Vineskin can address that. I don't believe those towers were ever brought before you. What will happen is carriers will come in or tower owners will come in and file a report with the FCC and saying, we're going to test it out, we're going to build possibly towers at this location. It doesn't mean that, the fact that they weren't built and not existing doesn't mean that they were declined by zoning. It's just a formality that you have to go through and get a registration, ASR is what it's called, for whatever reason might have been, no leasing, whatever. They weren't constructed.
So, John, if what I'm hearing, then the consideration for those other towers were outside of this zoning process?
Correct.
For the county? Okay. Commissioner, I'm inclined to support your recommendation. I just want the board to consider the fact that there could be consideration for other sites with opposition because it would be another tower within, you know, close proximity that could be addressed by just adding five feet versus adding another tower in this area, which could be a reasonable request by another carrier to do that. I think it would be a modest consideration to consider an additional five feet than to have another 160-plus feet for another tower. But, you know, considering that there is some variability of that taking place because it's speculative, you know, I can understand the request to keep it at 160 feet to be conservative, but we might be conservative here and end up having to be generous in the future because you're going to go from 165 to now 320 feet of total tower height in a close proximity. Yes, Commissioner?
I think we're looking at what's before us. I don't know that we can look down the road because that would be a separate case that would come before us. So I think with this case, I mean, we have to look at the proposal before us, and I understand what you're saying, that could happen, but again, we're speculating and we don't know. So.
Commissioner, they did propose 165.
But I mean another tower?
Yes, another tower would be speculative, but I just know from our, from looking at zonings in the past, there has been consideration for co-locations on a tower, and that keeps us from having to consider additional towers from being built. And so what, yeah, the only concern is, yes, it's speculation, but just considering the generous allowance for cell phone towers under federal law, you know, we could be mitigating consideration of a second tower by, just by adding five feet. Even though it could be in the future, I don't see self, you never know, technology could change, but since I've been here, we've been approving cell phone towers. There, you know, there likely could be a request for more, but, you know, part of my reason for considering supporting the commissioner is that, you're right, we don't know. But I think we have some, I think we should also consider possibilities so that we're not being unreasonable in considering the future impact of this decision.
And in the presentation, there was something about this allows for three additional co-locators?
Yes.
Is that at the 165 or the 160?
No, at the current height, actually, we, it's structurally built to hold four carriers total on the existing pole as it's designed. What we're contemplating is, under the federal law, it gives us the right to extend that tower. If, say, the bottom person of the four says, that height is too low for me, I would really prefer to be higher, it would allow that extension. And what we're, I guess, contemplating is, what is that extension height? Under the federal law, we could go higher than 165. We, under our own studies, we feel that 165 would be the limit for anybody coming in, but that's not what we're asking for for AT&amp;T. This is all, if the fourth carrier on the bottom feels that's too low, they would then get the higher height. And what is that height?
Okay. So with that, the lower you are, the less reach you're going to have?
Technically, yes. Certainly, you're lower, but each carrier has different frequencies, each carrier has different bandwidths, so each carrier is located on different areas. The towers that we showed you for AT&amp;T, not everybody's on those same towers. Horizon's on the one up on Beaumont, they're not on the one on Stylesboro. So you get shifting maps that work around.
Okay. Sure. And just for clarification for the board, my motion was based on our county experts' Cityscapes recommendations, and they have been working very closely with Diamond in our attorney's office in this process.
Thank you. Did I see a hand up here or here? Are we good? Okay, so, did you present, did you present a motion in a second and we have discussion? Is there any further discussion on this matter? Okay, I'll, why don't we call the question? Okay, the motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I believe we have one other business item?
We got two.
Two? Okay. That's right, one was potentially going to be pulled. Was the applicant for, the second one, was it the Walmart?
What about OB 27?
You got motion consent? There was one, I thought you wanted to move.
Moving into the other business agenda, first item is other business item number 32 of 2021 for Walmart, which is to consider amending the stipulations for Walmart regarding rezoning application Z169 of 2003. The property is located on the west side of Chastain Meadows Parkway, north of Ernest Barrett Parkway, and land lots 571, 572, and 582 of the 16th District. By way of background, Madam Chair and Board, the property was rezoned for Walmart's store in 2003, subject to many stipulations regarding the color of the building. The applicant would like to renovate the facade of the building with fresh paint to meet the corporate look of the newer, rebranded Walmart stores. The exterior colors would consist of gray tones as part of the new look for Walmart. Renderings of this new look are included in the other business packet for your review. If approved, all previous conditions should remain in effect. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for OB 32? Is there anyone here opposed to OB 32?
John, I don't see the applicant as here. Commissioner Boral, how would you like to move forward?
I would like to hold it and hear it next month, and if you could give me some better contact information from Walmart, I did send an email.
Okay.
To the applicant, the name on the applicant, but I haven't heard back. Also, we got an email last night or yesterday from the Bell's Ferry Civic Association, and they have indicated that the signs were not posted. So we need to check on that, John. But either way, we've got to continue it to July. So that would be my motion, to continue it to July.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Moving into the last item on today's agenda is other business item number 33 of 2021, which is to consider a settlement of litigation for Park Lane Capital II LLC regarding rezoning case Z23 of 2020. The property is located on the northwest corner of Atlanta Road and Daniel Drive, and land lots 421 and 444 of the 17th District. By way of background, Madam Chair and Board, the subject property was rezoning application in September 2020, to rezonate property from RM 12 and R20 to GC for convenience store fuel sales. The Board of Commissioners denied the application, and the applicant filed a lawsuit challenging the decision. Since the filing of the lawsuit, the applicant has communicated with the county attorney and zoning division staff regarding potential compromise of the decision. The applicant has proposed rezoning the property to RM 12 for 12 luxury townhomes, and the applicant has submitted a letter detailing their proposal dated May 14, 2021, which is attached to the other business item. If approved, all staff comments in the other business item should be incorporated in the settlement. At this time, the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 33?
I haven't heard from any of them.
Six, seven, six. Let the record show there are six people here in opposition. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in. I would just add one additional piece to what John was saying, and that was this was presented at executive session earlier in May, and we had discussions about that point in time.
Thank you.
Yes, Garvis, feel free to go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon to each of you on the Board of Commissioners. For the record, my name is Garvis Sams. I represent Park Lane Capital Roman numeral two LLC. I'll just call them Park Lane for easier reference. Mr. Thornton Morris is its principal, and he was here earlier. I'm not sure if he's here still or not. Evidently, he had an appointment he had to get to. The property at issue shown on the site plan here, this is a 1.088 acre tract of land, and as you can see, it's located at the northwest intersection of Atlanta Road and Daniel Drive. It has contingency to the city of Smyrna. If you look to the north, and I know you got it in my handout in your GIS maps and others, you can see this property is split zone between RM 12 in the northern portion and the balance of it is zoned R20, both of which are residential categories, the R20 category just simply within the confines of a CAC is just, this is not where you're typically going to see single-family detached houses being built here. So we'd say from a palpable perspective that R20 just is not appropriate. The totality of this property, everything to the north-south, is located within a community activity center under your future land use map. And in terms of land use itself, to set the stage for you, to the north of this are properties, two lots that are both zoned NS within the CAC. Also Belmont Crossing Apartments are to the north as well. That's RM 12 and high-density apartments. South of the property is a former HVAC systems building, and I don't believe it's presently being utilized, and then two other tracts that are zoned GC. All the properties I've mentioned so far are within the community activity center. And then, of course, across Atlanta Road, you've got the Heavy Industrial Georgia Tech Research Facility, a fairly recent ilk. Almost exactly a year ago, we were before you, or a reasonable facsimile of this board to present this case. At that time, Park Lane proposed a convenience store with gas sales and ancillary retail with, of course, the pumps and the things that go along with that. We received a recommendation for approval from staff for the convenience store with the ancillary retail, and we received unanimous recommendation from the planning commission for that as well. But it met its demise with a two-three split vote, and since that time, since that rejection, we did file, based on constitutional issues, as you might suspect, a lawsuit challenging that, because in our estimation, there's simply no way a single-family detached piece of property or any single-family classification is appropriate along a major arterial such as Atlanta Road with traffic counts exceeding 40,000 cars a day on some days. But in any event, after filing the lawsuit, the way this goes, mandatory mediation is required in all cases. In this particular case, we chose, I said we, the county attorney and I spoke, and I'm talking about Mr. Ryan Johnson, I'm not talking about Mr. Rowling that's seated over here, but nevertheless, the county attorney's office was engaged, and we spoke about a potential settlement of the case. And what you see before you today was reached as a positive settlement of the case, incorporating one of the existing zoning classifications already on the property, and also being within the pale of what would be allowed within the CAC as residential. We received direction from, direction maybe the wrong word, we received acquiescence from the county attorney's office to proceed in that fashion. I prepared a letter, commissioned a revised site plan to show what you're seeing before you, which is a proposal for townhomes. And after that, it was presented to you in executive session, and of course, we're not allowed in there when you're talking about personnel issues, land use acquisitions, and litigation. But the fact of the matter is, it was, to the extent you can use the word, it was ratified, or at least you gave it the authority to move on to this agenda. So that's where we are today, looking for a ratification of the settlement that we have tentatively reached. And it can only be a tentative settlement until such time as the entirety of the board signs on to it. What we are asking for is a rezoning from RM 12 and R20 to RM 12 for the purposes of what you're seeing here, which is a townhome, a Class A, highly amenitized townhome development consisting of a total number of 12 towns. And of course, the overall density is 11.03 units per acre, this site being just a little over an acre. These townhomes will be anywhere between 1,800 and 2,400 square feet. They'll be the two-story traditional. They'll all have either three or four bedrooms. I don't know if the school system's weighed in on that yet or not. I haven't seen any comments. Typically, when you're seeing a multifamily, you're seeing now the latest trend for development with double-income millennials or studios or one or maybe two-bedroom apartments. But with townhomes, it's a little different, or it's a lot different, particularly in terms of wanting to be able to not only attract those demographics, but also family demographics as well. We are asking that these, we are saying that these will be for sale only in a maximum of one unit or one home, townhome at any one time could be rented. When I say highly amenitized, what I'm talking about is contained in paragraph five of my latest letter. So these will be nine-foot ceilings, the high finishes in terms of countertops, wood cabinetry, and the equivalent of that, spacious open floor plans, everything now in the Cumberland Core and Long Powers Ferry and the other areas where you're seeing, you're seeing townhomes that are being developed. Parking lighting on this will be downcast, environmental-type lighting. Entrance signage will be ground-based monument-style signage. It'll be a part of the landscape plan, and then incorporate into the landscape plan, it'll be irrigated and lighted, and of course, landscaped as a part of that plan, and the district commissioner will, of course, review that plan. district commissioner will, of course, review that plan after the county arbors for review and hopefully approval. The Department of Transportation has weighed in on this, and you have some specific comments in front of you in terms of Mr. Peterson's OB analysis. But they're asking for the voluntary donation and conveyance of right-of-way on Daniel Road, the side street, 25 feet from center line, which we're agreeable to. Also, they're asking that, to the extent that we either relocate, dislocate, or destroy any sidewalk curb and gutter during the construction and development, to be, obviously be required to replace those. The Stormwater Management Division is not fully cognizant of what's downstream, although they figure that there's a paucity, a lack of downstream infrastructure. What we'll have for this site will be underground detention with a highly-evolved water quality component, which is quite expensive, but we're going to have to solve some, or potentially solve some problems downstream with the release of water from this site. And of course, as far as the water system, if you can look at the southwest corner of this property, there is a water line, excuse me, a sewer line there that traverses a portion of the property. We're either going to have to stay the heck away from that in accordance with the water system's distance requirements, or in the alternative, we can relocate and replace that. If we do, instead of the clay pipe, which it is now, interestingly enough, it'll be replaced with upgrades to the sewer line as far as ductile and PVC line, which probably is what's going to end up happening. The Fire Marshal's Office has made certain that we comply with sufficient interior maneuverability and accessibility for public safety, including fire apparatus. They also have asked that we provide 24-hour contact notification on the property, and that there be sufficient ability for them to be able to fight a fire either from Daniel or from Atlanta Road. While this is being built, any construction, equipment, or vehicles, or personnel will be limited to being on this site, not on Daniel, not on Atlanta Road, as a part of the conditions from this. We don't anticipate that any component of the detention will be above ground, but to the extent that any part of it is, it'll become a part of the landscape plan. I know I'm out of time. I've got 30 seconds.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
I'll give you 30 seconds, and then apply that time to the opposition.
Yes, ma'am. That's very kind of you. Thank you. Lastly, we just would ask that you include, as you typically do in zonings, and not just settlements or litigation, that the district commissioner be imbued with the authority to make minor modifications to this. From a land use planning perspective, it's consistent with your comp plan, your future land use map, your policy that's been articulated for this section of the corridor. There's no objection from the city of Smyrna. Of course, it's not an annexation, but I've spoken with their staff to make sure there's not, not withstanding their moratorium on townhomes. So, for all these reasons, it's because you're county attorney, we think the district commissioner, and we know the staff support this, we do ask that you approve this settlement of litigation as another business.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Opposition will have 11 minutes to present. Just confirming, they were sworn in prior.
Yes, Chairman, they were sworn in. And just for the speakers, you'll see the timer that's on the podium, so you'll be able to keep track of the time.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Hardy. Like many of my neighbors, I grew up in this Smyrna Marietta area and love it very much. We bought our first home last July on Daniel Drive. I also work in the Smyrna Market Village. Until last Thursday, we had been trying to get information regarding the settlement of litigation sign. We weren't sure what it meant, because we're used to seeing like the zoning signs there. So, we did receive the packet on Thursday. I passed the information on to my neighbors, who were eager to know what was going on. On Sunday, my sister and I spoke to as many neighbors as possible to gather their thoughts and concerns, and with a short notice, many neighbors who wished to attend today could not due to a variety of reasons, including work, medical procedures, a sick child, et cetera. The consensus of the neighbors is that we all want to make our neighborhood better, but the proposed plan as it stands does not take our neighborhood into consideration. I grouped the concerns into two categories. The first category is safety of the intersection. So, right now, that strip of Atlanta Road is like a racetrack. The cars fly there. I don't know, like, if there's not a lot of police action or what happens. So, it's dangerous for us to turn from Atlanta Road onto Daniel Drive. There's also heavy pedestrian traffic on the sidewalks right there that we have to look out for as well. The current plan involves entry onto Daniel Drive. This means that while already making a dangerous turn, we would have to immediately dodge cars coming in and out of that lot. In the notes for this case, the DOT states that while they don't advise for an entry here, they can make an exception. That exception would be at the expense of the safety of current residents, future residents, and anyone else who travels on our street. The proposed entry on Daniel would also be directly across the driveway from a property, the Smyrna property he mentioned, and another property that backs up to that would also have its entry right there as well. The other concerns were the number of townhouses, so paving the entire lot equals more runoff. In the paperwork regarding this case, the notes were made that the development plans to tie into our drainage system that consist of a series of ditches in our front yards that fail and cannot handle a normal rain without flooding our yards and the road as it is. I have pictures from the two neighbors at the front of the drive. Just so you can kind of see, this is the third one, too, what goes on there. Also, he mentioned, single-family homes weren't conducive with the area. We all live in single-family homes on Daniel Drive. The entire area behind this property is single-family homes. Also, he describes the townhomes as luxury. There's no room for a gate, or a fence, or anything of that nature. So, basically, I don't understand why all of the exceptions were made for this development regarding the entry tying into our drainage system that's already failing, reduction of buffer zones on all sides of the property. The housing market is going crazy right now. We see people at all these properties constantly. We have a chance to have something really great that would benefit our neighborhood and our county as a whole. It doesn't make sense to approve something at the expense of existing neighborhood. I hope that you just realize that we're here because we care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
My name is Rochelle Tyus, and I purchased 871 Daniel Drive last year. It was my empty Nestor house that me and my husband purchased. And the reason why we purchased that house, because of the community. We own our homes over there, so we take great pride in our, in our community. Our neighbors have lived there for decades, okay? What this gentleman proposed, I heard him mention "community" several times. Not once did he get with the community of Daniel Drive and ask us our opinion. If you look, if you turn on to Daniel Drive from Atlanta Road, as you can see, that light blue spot where the curve is, that is a dead zone. You don't see traffic coming unless you get to that curve. And if they're going to propose putting an entryway right off of Atlanta Road, it's almost irresponsible to me, okay? Safety should be first. All of the other properties, like Belmont Apartments and the townhomes on the other side, all of their entryways is right off Atlanta Road, not a side street, okay? And he's wanting to pack, or they're wanting to pack, all these townhouses in one little small corner. I just don't think that is respectful to the community, okay? I love the community. I plan on retiring there, you know, as a retirement specialist. I drove, I drive all over Atlanta, and I see these type of properties. So, I can tell you, the parking is extremely difficult, especially if they're developing for families. Families usually have multiple cars. If they don't have enough parking space in their own property, where else are they going to park? On Daniel Drive, it's already going to be congested when we got two, traffic going two different ways. So, that's another concern of mine as well. So, I wish you would please adhere to everything I've said tonight, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Bethany Travis. I am a business owner and a homeowner on Daniel Drive as well. I moved there seven years ago, and within that seven-year period, even before the proposed development that would affect us so directly, there has been an incredible increase in traffic on our street, in litter, crime, all kinds of things, just because of the other developments that have been there. With his comments that that particular area does not support single-family homes, that's patently untrue. As you can see, south and west of where he's proposing to build is nothing but single-family homes, and in fact, we've seen an increase in them not being so much rental properties as being bought. And to coincide with my companion's comments, because they're being bought this way, there's a lot more community pride being put into them, a lot more effort into people bringing up property values. I own a business that starts at a baseline of people's houses at $2, $3 million. I'm very aware of what luxury is. Just because you put high ceilings and granite counters in someplace and charge a lot of money does not mean it's luxury. Putting that amount of residences on that small bit of property is not at all coinciding with our neighborhood. So, again, just to reiterate, we take a lot of pride. I could have moved to other areas where there were less trees and less of a sense of community, could have bought a lot bigger house for a lot less money, but I chose this particular street because it's a gem. There's not very many places like this left in that particular corridor, especially of Cobb County, so I think the efforts should be made at all costs to preserve it if possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Ken Daniel. I'm at 811 Daniel Drive. It is of concern, certainly, when you talk about having townhomes as opposed to a gas station, a convenience store, some unspecified drive-through, we'd rather see townhomes. But it's the density, when I look at this proposal and you see how many they are squeezing into this small property, again, that sort of, to me, is the exact opposite of any concept of luxury. It's not a townhome development that I would want to live in. If you look at the site plan that they have, it is virtually all hard surface, which is going to increase the stormwater problem. And as you saw from the photographs, we've currently got an existing problem with that. This has got to make it worse. We've had, one of the neighbors down in the, on Daniel Drive, there was so much flooding that it completely flooded their backyard. I mean, covered it, not in a couple inches of water. It was feet of water. It was so bad that they personally paid to install some piping from Daniel Drive down to the back of their property. Another storm came through and floated that piping up, washed all the dirt off of it, and so they've had to reinstall it again and put more dirt, more sod on it. And that is on the opposite side of the street. Some of these other residents that we have, the ditch is right in their front yard. And what we have been told by county stormwater is, that's not the county's responsibility to maintain that. That's the responsibility of the individual homeowners. So, it's the homeowners on Daniel Drive that are supposed to be maintaining, excuse me, this stormwater management system that this development is going to be tying into. Another concern that we haven't talked about much, if you look at that aerial photograph there, if you see the way that Daniel Drive ties into Atlanta Road, it's not a 90% 90-degree angle. So, if you're coming up Daniel Drive, and either if you're going to turn south or north on Atlanta Road, the problem is trying to look and see about the oncoming traffic from the north. You really have to turn your head in order to be able to see traffic coming. And again, this is a state route, so traffic is coming down through there at a high rate of speed. It's really difficult to judge it. And with the density that they are suggesting here, you're going to be putting two-story houses in that part, and that does not even, and they're getting a variance for the building line, so that it's less than you normally would have, but then that doesn't include their decks. The decks are going to extend even further beyond that. I see this as being a real problem of being able to make a visual entry and have a safe exit onto Atlanta Road. So, with all of those things in concern, I hope that you will reject this thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing there being no additional speakers, I'll turn things over to you, John, if you can let us know staff's recommendation.
For settlements, the staff knowing does not make a recommendation, since it's completely within the board's purview to accept it or not accept it.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. As you know, this was heard for a convenience store and fuel sales and retail last year and was denied. And the opposition, I know Mr. Daniel was one of the ones here last year, and requested that it stay residential. So, when we got a lawsuit, we asked the applicant to look at residential and keeping with the RM12 next to that. There were some differences with the initial zoning, where we had closed Daniel and only had an entrance and exit off of Atlanta Road. So, Mr. Sams, if you could come back up. I know this is, meets the RM12 with 11 units per acre, and it's under the 12 units per acre code.
Yes, ma'am.
On the site plan that's up on the screen.
Yes, ma'am.
The section that looks like a T going out toward Atlanta Road and then the bottom coming out at Daniel.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that access to Atlanta Road, or could it be?
It could be, but your DOT would actually, they anticipate there's a possibility that Daniel Road, Atlanta Road may be signaledized in the future. If so, it's going to be hard to achieve sufficient spacing. To answer your question, physically, yes, it can, but I think DOT would rather see the configuration that we have now, as opposed to coming off Atlanta Road. I guess Ms. Diaz is, she's here.
I wasn't aware of a signal. I want the, yeah.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner, then I'd like, and, sorry, Commissioner, I don't want to get ahead of you. I know you're, this is your matter, but I'd like to have DOT address with you.
Yeah, I was going to call him up, but I think Commissioner Gamble had something else.
Okay. Commissioner Gamble.
Well, how many homes are on McDaniel?
Are on Daniel?
Or on Daniel Drive?
It's a, it's a.
And does it, does it feed into additional subdivisions? Because if it doesn't, there's no way it'll warrant a light.
Let's get DOT to address that.
Yeah, this is the first time hearing of a signal there.
Amy Diaz, DOT. So I believe what's being referred to is there has been a signal warrant study done there to see if it warranted signalization. Those are done a lot of times based on citizen request. It does not warrant signalization, and we are not anticipating it being warranted.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Can we keep adding additional? Amy, Amy, can you?
Yes.
I think the Chairwoman has some additional questions.
Certainly. Yes, thank you. Can you talk to us about the entrance into the subject property? Could the property have access onto Atlanta Road per Commissioner Burrow's question versus Daniel Drive?
Yes. So to have the access on Daniel Drive to address one of the citizens' concerns, they would have to be able to meet the site distance requirements for a driveway to be able to be there. If they couldn't, then we would want them definitely to be on Atlanta Road instead of Daniel Drive if they don't meet site distance.
Oh.
Atlanta Road is obviously a busier road, and so we a lot of times try to get driveways off of major thoroughfares in that fashion and put them on side streets. But in this case, because of the placement of how close that driveway is to Atlanta Road, it could be accommodated either way. That is not a state route. That is a county roadway, so it would be under DOT's jurisdiction.
Okay. There's a stipulation here, and perhaps, I don't know if this is addressing site distance, but it says recommend access point on Daniel Drive have a minimum of 50 feet uninterrupted straight line distance. Is that what's addressing the site distance?
That is not. That is addressing the stacking ability of vehicles that are exiting. It's basically uninterrupted distance is the distance between, when you come off of, the right-of-way line is how we measure it in the county, but you could, from the right-of-way line to the first, either the first internal drive aisle, or driveway, or parking space. And that's to allow that 50 feet to have vehicles without conflict points.
Okay. Thank you. So from what I'm hearing you share, then staff would still need to assess the layout of the site to determine where that point of entry would be. And it could potentially be on Atlanta Road if there isn't enough site distance on Daniel Drive.
Correct.
Okay.
And would that need to be a right-in, right-out on Atlanta Road, or would it be full access?
It would be right-in, right-out, I believe.
Is there a median?
Why would it be, why would it be right-in, right-out?
Okay, sorry. It's always hard to see on the aerial for this because the trail's right next to it. It makes it very confusing to look at.
I know there's no median.
Yeah, so that would be full movement access.
So to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
To address the First Lady that spoke, said she had trouble. Did you send out getting information? I haven't heard from anyone, and I know I met with Mr. Daniel and others last year when this, you know, the other application was proposed. Did you send out the thousand, I don't know if they, or homes would be within the 1,000 feet or not, but...
We did. We sent out, in fact, with an OB application, it's a really accelerated process. We filed the application, then we got about two days to get it out. But it was, the notification letters were sent out. The property was posted on the day it was supposed to be posted. Litigation or settlement of litigation and, and Bill will back me up on this, is a little different. I mean, typically, I'm not standing up here having not talked with you or having talked with any others, but you're represented by counsel, so I'm technically precluded from that, which is sort of a disadvantage for an advocate, or lobbyist, or however you want to deem a zoning attorney. But I'm very well aware of their opposition and did hear from them. But we sent out notification letters, so I can't explain why someone may not have received it. We turned it in to Mr. Peterson. We have to, we have to give a certification of, to Mr. Peterson, so he's got that in his file.
Yeah, you, you may have been with, not within the 1,000 feet, which requires notification of any business or homes within 1,000 feet. So, but regardless, what I'd like to do is hold this till July and have you and me and the neighbors meet and you with DOT to see if there could be access on Atlanta Road in keeping with, you know, your site plan, if that's possible, or if you may have to lose a lot or so. I don't know. I just would rather, I feel better if we could continue it and hold it since I had not heard from the opposition and from, from the initial application last year. It was my understanding that they wanted residential, not convenience or commercial. So let's see if we can work this out and hold it till July. That would be my motion to hold to July.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that with one additional comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
If you could also address the stormwater.
Right. I noticed it's underground detention, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
But it has to release somewhere.
I'll have Carl or Dave Braden.
Yeah, okay.
Address that. Yes.
May I just say, well, y'all go ahead and vote, and then I just, I may ask permission to say one thing.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any additional discussion from Commissioners?
Garvis, you can go ahead.
Thank you. If the site, if the aerial could come out just a little bit, I just wanted to show you one thing. There is a piece of property, as you can see behind this, that is industrial compatible. It will be developed. Its only access is either through us or off of Daniel. So I just wanted you to be aware of that fact. And also, number two, our original plan with the convenience store, it showed a point of ingress and egress on Atlanta Road further north in anticipation that that might be an intersection at some time. We have no opposition to having an access on Atlanta Road whatsoever. We thought we were doing what DOT had instructed, but we're fine with the hold, and we appreciate your consideration, Commissioners.
Thank you. And just my brief comments, I'm very pleased to see the community out here today. It shows that you have come together in, in support of protecting your interests as a community. And we all saw this application, at least I'll speak for myself, I saw this other business application as a step in the right direction compared to where we were last year when this was going to move forward as a gas station. And so now that we see you, I'm grateful that the Commissioner is interested in meeting with you, with the applicant, so we can see how we can partner with you to move this area forward. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, we'll call the question.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I believe this concludes our agenda.
Yes, Chairwoman, if you would allow me, before we have been doing virtual hearings, we've always had a motion to continue the virtual hearings. As John announced earlier, we're moving out of the virtual hearings component, and then the moving forward in the July meetings, as is also with Planning Commission, there are no more virtual components regarding our hearings, and a motion was made related to that. So just want to make sure that the citizens are aware of that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Everyone, understand this is our last virtual meeting. Everyone will be here on site for our future meetings. With that, have a great rest of your Tuesday and week.